Minutes from May 5th. And I would entertain a motion. Everybody's had a chance to look at those.
To make a motion that we approve the minutes from our May 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is a zone change in preliminary plat. This is for the Escola project. Dave or Brandon, whichever of the two of you want to take us through that one?
Thank you, Mr. Euler. I am leery of kind of rehashing things that were talked about in length in your last meeting. So I'll just give a little bit of background generally on the property and its location, that type of thing, and then I'll touch on the, I think, most significant changes that have been made to the design since your last meeting. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have of me. The subject property is not too far from the intersection of Del Monte Road and Arrowhead Trail. So the intersection I was describing is right here. There is a storage unit project under construction between the subject property and that intersection. The M-Tech campus is on the northern border of the subject property, and the Old Mill Estate subdivision is immediately west of the subject property. Several months ago, the general plan was changed from mixed use to medium-density residential, and that's been the topic of some discussion that we've had relative to the number of homes that might be included in a residential development here. In short, there's a density range provided with the text of the medium-density general plan designation that has an eight-unit-per-acre ceiling. So the proposed zoning being R3 would allow for a development, in fact, that would exceed that eight-unit-to-the-acre maximum that's called for in the general plan. Now, we as staff, and this has been the case with the city council in the past, have taken that into consideration, what both the zoning would allow, but also the general plan in terms of what we've recommended be approved, and ultimately what the council's been approved. And for that reason, I think, at least in part, the commission continued this project from your last meeting to tonight to give the applicant an opportunity to bring the total number of homes down to where they'd fit into that range with the eight-unit-per-acre maximum. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. But certainly, a really fundamental part of the proposal that's before you tonight is the proposed zone change, changing from essentially an agricultural zone to the R3 zone, which is not the most dense residential zoning district that we have in Spanish Fork, but it's pretty close. Certainly, one of the more dense, one of the few zones that we have that allows for multifamily development. But inasmuch as the proposal in this case is underneath that eight-unit-per-acre ceiling, staff would find that it's consistent with the proposed general plan. Maybe kind of going on from that to just talk a little bit about the proposed layout. If Mike, you can maybe go to the next image, I think. Well, yeah, let's go right there. This is not dramatically different from what you saw a month ago. A certain number of proposed homes have been removed so that the overall density that we're looking at here tonight is below eight homes per acre. The most significant changes have happened here in these two banks of units that are closest to Del Monte Road, where several units on each side of this alley or private driveway have been removed, at least in part to make room for additional off-street parking here. I think before, we as staff felt like that was a very important addition to make. Feel the same way now, appreciate the applicant adding the parking in there in particular and using that area to bring their density down below that eight-unit-per-acre ceiling. There have been some other, I would say, more subtle changes that have been made to the design. All in all, I believe they've added something like 15 parking spaces from what was seen previously. And I think that certainly is beneficial for this type of a neighborhood. For whatever reason, these types of projects seem to park much more heavily. That is, the residents of developments like this seem to have more vehicles in Spanish Fork than what we see in other Utah County communities. At least, that's what we learn when we talk to other cities and learn what their parking standards are and discuss whether they have some of the parking issues that we have elsewhere in Spanish Fork. But as proposed, the development exceeds our minimum parking requirement by several dozen parking spaces. And in addition to that, unlike some other townhome projects that we have in the community, while we won't allow a developer to count this for purposes of meeting a parking requirement, there is on-street parking available within the development itself. We're sensitive as staff to concerns that neighbors have raised about a deficiency in parking here resulting in spillover parking into the next-door neighborhood, which we know has happened, for example, with M-ATC over the years. I think it's happened for a few different reasons. Among those, M-ATC starting to charge students to park in the parking lot there and that type of a thing, just things that inherently would maybe disincent somebody from parking on-site. And there's no guarantee that that's not going to happen here.
You're allowing it, but not counting it towards the code requirement for parking, the on-street parking?
Our typical local street design accommodates, allows for on-street parking.
But it's not being counted. So when you say there's several dozen parking spaces above the minimum requirement, you're not counting your on-street parking?
Yes, that several dozen spaces is not inclusive of any areas in the project where somebody might legally be able to park on-street, just like in any single-family neighborhood in Spanish Fork. I don't want to belabor the parking issue, but again, it's real. Part of the, I will say, problem, I think, does come from us counting garage parking spaces. And without a doubt, not every vehicle gets parked in a garage. Not every garage is so free of things that you could park cars in the garage. And I think that's something that, well, it's something that we as staff have discussed, trying to maybe approach a little bit differently in terms of how we count those spaces towards required parking and maybe work with homeowners' associations and so forth to try to make sure that garage spaces are available for parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But with the amount of excess parking that's provided, we're comfortable that some of the problems that we've seen in other neighborhoods very likely won't happen here. I understand that's not a guarantee.
So would the on-street parking be allowed in this, but not those, right?
So these are, right, so these private driveways here, the garage doors are adjacent to, are they about three feet from the travelway? So there literally is no place to park there without blocking somebody's garage. So no, just practically speaking, that's not an opportunity that would exist here. But part of what, for example, maybe over here, the rear-load, that's what we would call them, rear-load meaning the garage is in the back of a townhome, where in this case, the front doors would front onto that public street. That means there aren't driveways interrupting that curb line along there, likewise along there, here, and so forth. Therefore, practically speaking, people could park there. They would legally be able to do that and so forth. It's different, though, as well here where you have the front-load townhomes. And essentially, it's one big curb cut for driveways, and really, you don't have that space. But does that help, just in terms of what would work and would be allowed and not?
There is some on-street parking areas and some not on-street parking areas. I mean, it looks pretty obvious where it would and where it wouldn't, right?
So overall density, parking, there have been a few design tweaks made to the proposed amenities. I think you have some updated plans, and still, they're a little bit conceptual. The applicants have made it clear that as they go from this stage to the final design, they'd like to produce then, you know, final landscaping plans and the like. I think that's a reasonable ask, that they not invest in, you know, fully engineered plans of that nature at this point. I think what they've given certainly gives us as staff a good barometer to use in terms of gauging the quality of what they would submit with their final design, should this get to the point to where they're applying for final plat approval and that sort of a thing. But nonetheless, I would say that they have upped their game in terms of the amenities that have been proposed since what you saw a month ago. That indeed was one of the recommendations that the DRC had made in advance of your last meeting on this. And that all being said, I think the most significant issue that still exists for some of the neighbors to the west in the Old Mill Estate subdivision is the idea that there would be a local street connection between this development and their neighborhood next door. I don't want to, again, belabor things too much. We as staff have pretty strong feelings about whether it's here or anyplace else, just the need to do what we can to create local street networks that work and that have appropriate connectivity and that sort of a thing. You have been given correspondence that we've received from a few of the neighbors next door. Lane Snyder sent some comments just a little while ago this afternoon. And Mr. Goff sent a couple of different emails that we've passed on to you. I think you have hard copies of that as well. And there are a number of different issues that they raised, but I do think that that connection seems to be a significant concern for them, as has been the case with some other neighbors that we've talked to in the last several weeks. But again, I think, you understand, excuse me, you understand how we as staff feel about the need for that. And I'll leave that as it is. Lastly, the applicant has given us draft CCNRs. I understand that's what they are. I mean, it's not a final product, but they have committed to set a certain ceiling on the number of units that, at least per the CCNRs, on a percentage basis that could be rented, with the idea that the remaining part would have to be owner-occupied. That is something that we, as the city, currently do not regulate. I don't think we have any immediate plans to get involved in regulating that. I also know that it's common for other homeowners' associations in Spanish Fork to monitor and to regulate what that ratio is in terms of how many townhomes in a project like this are rented versus owner-occupied. And I'll maybe let the applicants touch on what that exact percentage is. But we're satisfied as staff that the limit that they're proposing would be healthy and that would allow for a certain number of the homes here to be rented without allowing this really to turn into a neighborhood that's simply owned by investors and is operating more like an apartment complex than a place where homeowners reside and build equity and so forth and, you know, put a stake in a neighborhood. So those are kind of the main highlights, in my view, from what was discussed last month. You did hold a public hearing last month. And we've made an effort as staff to describe the different issues that were discussed during that public hearing. We've listed them out as best as we could from the minutes in our own recollection and gave that list to the chairman. But that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have of me tonight. If I miss anything, Mr. Snyder's here as well. Anything for me?
Got some questions for the applicant.
Thanks.
Cody, who, CCNRs, who wants to take that question? Dave mentioned the rental cap possibly being in there. What's that look like in your draft?
Good evening. We have set the cap at 15%. The verbiage is "may," which gives us the option that, at this point, we don't feel we even need to sell to investors. So the verbiage is 15%. A unit shall be owner-occupied for two years. And again, we will reserve the right whether we choose to pursue even selling to someone as a investor.
So owner-occupied for two years, explain. Does that exclude the 15%? Can somebody buy right away, get within the 15% in rent?
If you purchase as an individual for your personal home, the document states that you may not sell the home for two years. The rental cap at 15% is inclusive of the community always.
And sell for two years or rent for two years?
They may not rent.
Okay. You're locked in your house.
I'm going to try and clarify, because we just did a little bit of a survey. It's a cap of 15% have to be owner-occupied? Up to 15% owner-occupied at any given time for two years? Or is it 15% can be rented?
15% may be rented, 85% owner-occupied.
And before you can rent, you have to have lived there for two years?
For two years.
But you would be precluded from being able to rent if the 15% was already met in the community, is that right?
Correct.
And that will be in the HOAs? HOA will enforce that, however it is they do that?
Correct.
And the CCNRs gives each resident there the right to enforce it as well?
Yes, the avenue by which they can lodge a complaint would go through the HOA, through the management company. We will have a presence as the managing body of the HOA for as long as we're there, and then we'll have a transition to the homeowners.
Couple of questions with that. Living in an HOA, if I were to move into this HOA, lived in my home for two years, how would I find out where I fall on the list? How do they track? Who was the first to rent? Who was the second to rent? How long have they rented? You know, where do I fall in line above that 15%? Let's say, three of us want to rent, but we've already hit the 15%. How do they track? How's the HOA going to keep track of who's renting when and who's next on the list? How does that take place?
Part of it is through inquiry. And a part of it is through homeowner notification. Mrs. Smith may say, hey, I feel that the Joneses' residence next door is no longer occupied by the Joneses. Can you please research this? And then the management company would pursue the issue.
And then there's some kind of application and waiting list process when you'd like to rent? If they're already at their 15% rental cap, then you submit an application and get on the list, and then they go down the list as other rentals become open?
I am not 100% sure, because as a general rule, the pace at which we build that, we are usually not in a community for longer than two years. So I truthfully am not privy to that scenario or the path that was taken when the issue was discovered.
It might be nice if something like that was fleshed out in a CCNRs for a process to help avoid issues with relations with neighbors, if there was just a, if there was some kind of process for how they were going to do that, especially with such a low threshold for possibility for rentals, which I think is great, but anyway.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Very good.
Any other questions for the applicant? Can you guys tell us exactly how many units you've lost and how many parking stalls you've added from our last meeting?
I believe, I believe we came back at the last meeting, and we had given up, I think, seven. And I believe in this round, one additional unit was given up on the townhomes. On the park.
Total eight units since the last time we met? Okay.
So a total from the very, eight from the first time that we presented.
And I think Dave already mentioned around 15 parking stalls, something like that.
Yes, and.
Everything, everything within that alleyway on top, basically?
Yeah, we stacked, I think there's nine of them in there now. I think originally, there was two to four. So we did lose our units on that street running north-south closest to Del Monte. And that's where we brought the extra ones in for parking to address the concern. And that's where we lost the bulk of our units.
Back to the rentals, that 15% includes anything within the HOA, which would also then include the single-family homes, is that correct?
That's correct.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So we had a public hearing last meeting. So this time, what I'd like to do is just go over the main points of concern that were addressed last time. And if there's anything that's not on this list that hasn't been talked about, then at that point, we would invite any of you to address us and bring those issues up. So first issue, do not permit the road connection to Old Mill Estates. Density, too many townhomes, too high of density for the project, and specifically, the townhomes portion. Increase the number of residential lots. Require all townhomes to have a driveway. Lot sizes and widths should increase. Loss of rural atmosphere. Development should match existing neighborhood. Adequate parking. Require garages to be used for parking and not personal storage. Traffic, want traffic study, concern over pedestrian safety due to vehicular routes through the neighborhood. Can Del Monte handle additional traffic? The potential of a dedicated free right turn onto Arrowhead at Del Monte. Road connection, neighborhood wants removed for vehicles, keep a walking path. Concerns about the road connection or safety, traffic, spillover parking. Renter-owner ratio and building materials, long-term quality of the building materials. Maybe we can go to number eight real quick, one that I was going to ask earlier, but I forgot. Is there anything in the CCNRs about parking in the garage? And what the garage can be used for? Is there anything that says they have to at least park one vehicle in the garage or both vehicles? Can you guys address that concern? And if not, is that something that could be added? Yeah, if you don't mind?
I don't know if we can legally demand that someone parks in their garage. I will look closer at the CCNRs to see what verbiage is in there.
If we, do you guys recall, or does the city recall, any other developments where the developer or the CCNRs had that verbiage within their CCNRs?
In my head, it seems like the other townhomes on that same road had something. I know that he addressed that.
He had like a half a garage aside for storage, an unfinished basement.
Right.
I don't think he had anything on the CCNRs.
But that was it there in time.
I think it's DRC that does.
That's doing that?
Because it seemed like we'd talked to somebody recently that was going to try and do that. I think that would ease a lot of concerns with, or at least one of the concerns with the neighbors is knowing that people are going to be required to at least use their garage for one parking stall, not that they can use it as a storage unit. Your units will have basements, is that right?
Correct.
So they could use storage in the basement. I know for a lot of people, it's easier to store big equipment and appliances in the garage than it is to haul it downstairs. So if you could look into that, I think we'd appreciate it. I think that was the only, maybe building materials. You're only doing hardy for all of your construction? Do you have any brick or stone? Or is it just hardy?
Are we doing the farmhouse with the brick?
Yeah, there's probably some stone and.
Some of the.
Some wains, some wains.
No stucco?
No.
Okay.
I saw white brick on some of the elevations you provided. Is that accurate?
There's some white brick on the Zions townhomes.
How does hardy hold up in comparison to some of the other building materials? One of the concerns is long-term quality.
It comes with a great warranty. It is not a material that is suspect to moisture and rot. It is stable. It adds color, contrast, and texture, where stucco just adds a uniform plain with a color. So I think that the product is appropriate for the community. I think that it lends itself to being fresh and new-looking as opposed to materials that are outdated now, such as vinyl siding. So we're able to deliver depth and texture on the home in a material which is maintenance-free. And I think that it's a great product.
Thank you. I think that was, those were the only two that I had for the developer. So thank you.
Thank you.
BJ Ryan.
Thank you.
Did we want Mike to address any of the traffic questions, or have we hashed those out?
I think Mike could give us a brief statement about the traffic study and what the capacity is for the roads currently.
Yeah, just a review from last meeting. So one of the concerns is, is there enough capacity on Del Monte? Yes, we do a 2050 model that generates traffic from all the land uses and sends them on their way, and then it estimates the size of the road needed. That's how the Del Monte Road was sized, has three-plus times the amount of capacity. Once it's all built out, that is expected to be seen there. As far as the, so we have any concerns there. The Tingey Study was done at the same time the Del Monte one was done. Wasn't quite this dense, but still more dense than like a single-family type density. So a little more in the middle, a little on the higher end. And it didn't have any, raise any concerns for us. And then as far as the connection goes, echoing Dave, neighborhood connectivity is a big deal. We'd want people to drive to collector roads to get to somewhere they could get through a smaller connection here. It's small, it's short, it was planned for. Whether or not we do this island, that's up to you guys. We don't see it as being necessary. We wouldn't typically ever put something in there for that short of a run. Longer roads, sometimes we'll do traffic calming to help slow down traffic on long stretches. But for something this short, we typically would not. So we would recommend having that connection made. I don't remember if there are any other parts of that. Do you have any other questions?
One of the concerns brought up was the parking. One of the concerns brought up was the parking stalls on the public road being a safety concern.
These ones here?
Yeah, yeah, anybody that's coming from the other neighborhood, cutting through here to get downtowns, be a quicker route. Uh, one of the concerns in the email that Mr. Snyder mentioned is just the safety of, one, you've got parking stalls on the public road. And possibly the chance for children with the play area right there, you know, playing on a public road. Do you have any concerns, obviously it's a concern with safety anytime, but has there been any issues in other developments within the city with parking stalls on public roads that have, that, that you can recall being a safety issue or, or any incidents of safety?
No.
And are there other developments in the city that have parking stalls on public roads?
Oh, probably six to eight that we've approved in the last year, two years. Will the play area be fenced? Around that, where the kids are gonna be playing, where they buy that road, will it just be open?
I, I didn't hear the answer.
Yeah, what was his answer?
There's a head shake.
Yes.
Will be open.
Uh, Mike, let me ask you another question on safety, do you, would you consider it being more, would it be safer to have the road connect and have, let's say a neighbor from this, this development wants to go to a neighbor in the other development? Would it be safer for them to have that connection and go through, through that route? Or to go on Arrowhead down and then, and connect that way? Traffic study, I know we looked at the accident report from last time showing that looked like most of the accidents were at the intersections. So I think I'm kind of answering, answering my own question, I think it would be safer to have the connection and be able to go through that connecting road rather than to have to get onto the highway.
Yeah, to getting on a higher speed road, interacting with two different signals, um, speed's forty-five, I believe through there. You know, that route's not particularly safe, um, the other route would be, you know, maybe something here. And around this way, again, getting on and off a collector road, um, really doesn't make sense. Just having this road through would be a much better option in our mind.
Um, do you wanna address the traffic study? I know, sorry Dave, I know earlier you'd mentioned that a few years back, there had been a traffic study done, you wanna explain why the city didn't feel it was necessary to have another one done?
Can I add to that real quick?
Yeah.
Just in terms of the scope of the study.
Uh, can you touch on whether or not Wheatfield and Barley at all were, were considered in terms of just to increase traffic that might be expected to.
I don't, I don't think it did, I could pull it up and look at it, but.
I was thinking.
They didn't look over there.
Sorry.
Um, so the density wasn't overly different, so we're talking order of, uh, less than a hundred trips difference in a day between the two different studies. And so it wouldn't have affected it measurably between the two. So we didn't order a second one.
Was the study done on a proposal that was more dense or less dense than what we're seeing?
It was less dense. I don't have a number, I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, it was about sixty homes in the area.
Sixty homes as compared to, what have we got here?
Hundred and eight.
As Dave pointed out, if you, if you go with Del Monte here or what is.
But, um, but Michael did just say that Del Monte has three times the capacity for what's currently planned, so to me it seems. I, for, I think the traffic thing, the biggest problem with traffic is when they're dropping off to ALA and they're picking up from ALA. That's your biggest.
Without traffic studies, it's an assumption, right?
Um, it's actually a lot of educated people that are, that know and study the science, so. I think it's pretty trustworthy there, so.
I, I think just the fact that you're by two major connectors. You've got Del Monte, you're within a few hundred feet of Arrowhead, I think that in itself, I mean, the other development that was further north, I feel like was a bigger concern with traffic than this one is. Just because you're closer to those two major connectors, in my, that's my personal opinion, again, I've not done my own traffic study.
So Mike, the, the results of the traffic study were such that if the density were higher, such as the one we're looking at now, it was in the margin of safety that you are not concerned? Is that, that's what you, that's what I'm supposed to, that's the.
So they did in the Tingey study, look at Barley.
Did look at Barley, you said?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Um, so A through F, F is failing, A is, it's not a, it's a, the best level source we'll call it, but it means the road's much too big for the amount of traffic. So it's almost like you had a two-lane road for fifty cars, there's just not a lot of use for, usually to utilize a road, you wanna be at a B or C to feel like it's actually being utilized. D, you start having failures and go to F, so.
And what are, what are the.
This includes Del Monte too, as part of, this is the combined one.
And what are the D and the F ones? And are the, have they been addressed?
This is Del Monte. This is existing with no improvements, plus the adding the project to it, this is existing without any changes. Like where it stands today, kinda thing, so this F was before they had a, anyway, it's on the other project.
Before improvements and.
It was with the project without improvements.
And there are be, improvements being made?
Yeah, this is the, the other Del Monte one.
Oh, okay.
This is the Tingey one here.
When you say improvements, what improvements? Cause both those exits, one of those exits is when, is an exit that they're creating with. That has the F.
You just need to use the mic, cause we're not picking up anything on the recording.
Sure.
Do we wanna talk about Del Monte, townhomes?
Well, it's, it's, I think it's relevant if you're talking about kid's safety, if you, if it's got an F and you're talking about improvements, I think that people wanna understand what that entails. Cause that intersection you said there is being created by the townhome project itself, that intersection doesn't exist until it's done.
Talking about the Del Monte Townhome Project or the Tingey?
That's the Del Monte one.
Which that one's already been approved.
But, but they're using, what I'm saying is for people to understand, research and understand what you guys are talking about on using the, the properties and how traffic study. If you're saying this is done after improvements, what does that mean? Cause that, that intersection wasn't even there, it's being created by those townhomes and it's receiving an F. So I'm trying to help people understand what improvements that means for their safety.
Aren't the improvements the widening and finishing of the road and adding the trail, the paved trail with the other developer?
With the study, yeah, what, what improvements were looked at to, to get the final grades?
Uh, let me look through it real quick, I didn't do the studies, let me read it.
So is the F, is the F after improvements, is that what that said?
No, that was without.
Without improvement, is that the existing condition of the road was an F?
But that, that don't say that, that, the intersection didn't exist before, so it couldn't be before, that intersection's being created by the town.
The eleven hundred?
The F one is, the D is existing. But the F is not.
I'm trying to think on the map.
I think that is.
You're talking about, cause you're talking about the Del Monte, the arriving ones, right? I thought they're.
It's this connection here.
That one right there, okay.
So it's blank in the first one, cause it doesn't exist. And then failing in the second one without the project, I assume that means the roundabout with the median that would be put in in the circulation is my guess. Cause right now everyone stacks up here, and so my guess is they would say this fails coming out, cause there's too much stacking here. And so there's not a lot of movement that can be made, but when the movement changes to have everyone be directed west to the roundabout, my guess is that's the improvement they're talking about. The traffic study's dealing with the timing at each intersection, right, the time it takes to move through it or the safety of each intersection? And as people are tempted to, as they wait in longer lines, they're tempted. They make worse decisions to shoot gaps or whatever.
So I guess.
So it is correlated to safety, but.
I guess my question is, does the Tingey, because this development's already, uh, that was the only one receiving an F, is that right?
Yeah.
This development's already approved and it's moving forward, how does the Tingey property affect the traffic study on that F?
It wouldn't, just because it's onto this road?
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, you did have some of that, does have a concern on stuff that you didn't work out.
Okay, perfect, we'll get to that.
Can I ask one more, one more question about traffic there? If there are people with grade schoolers, if we can go back to the, if we can go back to the plot map, yeah. So, so people who are here will have grades, grade schooler kids who, some of which will go to ALA. Some will go to Riverview, some will go to ALA. So probably, rather than turning left onto Del Monte here and going over here to get to ALA, school people who live here will probably go down through the neighborhood. Is there a way, how does this, how does this road, this road connect to bring your kids to, to and from school, is it blocked off there?
No, you turn right and then you'd have a turn pocket.
Sean, it's actually a longer route, I don't know if this is working, so my kids go to ALA and the drop-off for elementary is, is actually right here, so that would be a lot, a lot further.
Oh.
But this is, this is the playground, this is the entry gate.
Oh.
And if it's, if it's too cold to get dropped off here, then they get dropped off here. So either way, this, this is still gonna be faster and frankly, a wider sidewalk, probably safer.
So, let me ask a question, where's the, where's the crosswalk at, is it about right here, somewhere in here? Sort of crossing guard?
They cross right here, the cross, crossing guards are.
Right there, there it is, so let me ask a question. We know this is vacant or gonna be, at least for a while. What's the possibility, or why couldn't we put a trail right here? Crosses right here in the middle, cuts across here and comes up to the, I mean, it's an option, something to think about, we've got the sidewalk already, but if we're worried about people going through the neighborhood or up to the busy road, why not create a trail on property that seems to already make sense to put a trail on?
So in front of the Del Monte townhomes and then this one as well, there'll be a twelve-foot planar strip and then a ten-foot trail. Again, that doesn't help solve the M A T C part, but there's sidewalk. Eventually that would, the desire would be for that to be a trail as well, so you do have a buffer, it's not like, um, some streets where it's just asphalt curb gutter and then you have a sidewalk, there will be a buffer there.
So M A T C, that stretch right there that won't have a trail, does have a sidewalk?
And, and this is the only place they're walking across the street without a cross, a crossing guard.
So I wonder if we could get lights installed there like we've got on the River Trail just before the bridge by Riverview Elementary, where they can push the button, the lights.
Oh, yeah.
Cross. I'd assume that's probably a fairly inexpensive fix for, for the city to put in.
At which spot, this spot there?
Yeah.
It's the only non-crossing guard across of a street for, for the ALA students.
And Riverview, if Riverview is going that way. So if you've already got a trail, then that mixes.
Well, regularly would have another slot now.
Yeah, down past the church on West Park.
And then they cross here.
Do they not have crossing guards anywhere else?
They've got a crossing guard right here, they've got the lights right here, which, which help, they're a great addition. Um, there wouldn't be anything here or here, but there's stop signs there and crosswalks, so. And I've, in the years that I've lived there, I've not heard of any, the only accidents I've heard of are right here on the bridge. Where, where kids have been hit. Any additional traffic questions from Mike? Okay, Jason, you mentioned somebody's got a, a comment or concern that wasn't on our list, if you wanna just state your name and then.
Uh, my name's Tyson Lewis, uh, it was brought to my attention that the, uh, it was asked to waive the, I guess it's considered a sound barrier wall. Um, I guess my thing is, concern is, is that you stay consistent with your townhomes and that that be required to be placed.
A masonry wall.
Correct.
Residential and.
Correct, yes, sir.
You guys saying in, in the paperwork, it, it, they left it as an option for the, for you guys to waive the masonry wall? And it, instead of having a requirement, so his property is right there on the masonry wall.
And who puts out a apply would be, like, right in these areas.
Correct.
Cause this is a storage units, these are single family.
Yeah, we know for sure here. Um, Dave or Cody, do you guys wanna address where you're gonna have a mason wall at?
Let me, let me take a stab at that.
Dave, okay.
Um, condition number two, maybe if one of you guys wanna read that. Boilerplate language that we have in construction standards, which is what engineering firms oftentimes just simply cut and paste into plans that they submit to allow for the city engineer potentially to waive the requirement that we just were talking about, really in situations that don't come into play here, it's more adjacent to big roads, I think that's where the confusion originated, but that's also why we explicitly have suggested that you add a condition, just, just to hopefully set that fear aside that a six-foot masonry wall be constructed where any multifamily units about another use, so that would be M A T C to the north. Uh, or the storage units to the south if they don't build a wall first, or, um, any, uh, I'm sure you're wearing, multifamily units about another use or an adjacent property such as the single family homes there, so just to be clear that nothing's being waived.
Including the single family units within the same development?
Exact. Lee, yes, it would be required there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Was it Tyson?
Yes, sir.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this is you over here, right Tyson? You're, okay.
So yeah, they will be required to put a masonry wall on your property line, oh, on their property line, but your backyard. Were there any other, Jared?
I have a couple of questions about the single family.
Oh, sorry, if you don't wanna, if you don't mind stating your name.
Jared Haney.
Thanks.
Um, on the single families, the lot sizes are average of six thousand square foot? Is that, is that fair to say? Eight thousand? Okay, and the houses are between twenty-five hundred and four thousand square feet?
Finished work finished.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, without the basements.
Without the basements.
Right, okay. So the point I'm getting to is, uh, is a SWIP question. You put that large of a impervious surface on that small of a lot, where does the water go? I've seen it, I was a SWIP manager in Vineyard City. It goes into the neighbor's yard.
I bet they'll have to put it out to Castillo Road.
If they can, if they can bring the downspouts from the back, run them to the front, run everything to an approved storm drain system, that would be great. Because I'm gonna have four, four of those backyards in my backyard.
So. What's the elevation on your backyard to the adjacent property?
Uh, three feet, I'm three feet lower. So grading's gonna be an issue.
To our standards, sorry, to our standards, aren't you required to contain your stormwater on your property?
Yeah.
That's on the city regulations.
Trespassing if you don't.
At state, yeah, and federally mandated that way, does it happen?
No.
No.
It doesn't happen in my neighborhood.
Is it enforced?
You can enforce it if you.
Is it enforced really well? No. So that, so I'm, that, that's why I'm talking about this, because I've seen the, I've seen the bad side of it. I've been on the enforcement side of it, it's super hard to enforce. If we can remedy that before it even starts, I think that'd be a good step for that.
I'm glad you brought it up, at least.
Yeah.
It's good.
Okay.
Jared, what's, what's, what is just east of you then? Now, what?
You wanna do an overlay, can, do you have an overlay?
I know it's vacant, but what's there? Is it, uh?
Crowls, a couple of crowls.
Crowls, so I'm, I'm.
So how, how has it been handled so far with that ground? Well.
Right now.
Have trouble with those?
No, they, they all actually slope away. They slope to the north and it's all pervious, it's all soil that's been mixed with manure and it goes down. But once you put, once you put the, uh, the roofline on, so you're looking at three thousand square foot of roofline. And then. Your driveways, and if they have, uh, an RV pad.
For sure.
So then now you have less than a thousand. So then now you have less than a thousand square foot of pervious surface for drainage. And that is completely unfeasible. So, I mean, fix the drainage, make the lot sizes bigger.
I think they can pull it off, it's just, it's what you said, enforcement actually goes per plan, per, per grading plan.
Yeah, and get a, yeah, enforce, enforce a grading plan that's, that's feasible for it.
Thanks Jared, good point.
They can pull it off, if my neighbor's a smaller lot.
Mike, you wanna explain what you're...
No, I was just measuring. Um, so part of the building plan review, they have to put on the berm, um, on their drawings to show that they will contain the water. Obviously they take it down, things change, but it's shown on the plans. Um, we've dealt with it probably twice a month for as long as I've been here. It just, neighbors that have their downspouts pointed at their neighbor's, uh, window wells and it goes down and floods their basement and we've, we've had all that. So, um, we inform that, yeah, if you, if your water goes on someone else's property, it's, it's trespassing. It's something you can sue against or whatever. Uh, we'll put the builder to make sure that they have something contained, especially if there's a slope, um, that's a big deal. The part to remember, we can, you can definitely have them say that they have to get everything to the front yard. Um, it's a little, could be challenging depending on the slope of a few things, but the front of the house will always go to the front, so the driveways, RV pads, everything else, unless they go clear to the back of the house, will always drain to the street. Right, there's very few that have a garage that drains into their, or sorry, driveway that drains into their own garage, cause no one wants that, right? So the front half of the house always gets out to the street anyway, it would just be the back downspouts. And we usually only have issue until the grass goes in, grass is a pretty good sponge, right? I mean, you turn on your sprinklers, it doesn't usually run off a whole lot, unless you really overwater, which they could do. Um, so you could get the downspouts out to the front, um, and try and get them into the, the street or to some bubble up somewhere in the, in the yard. But typically, well, I'd say every one of our complaints were with the neighbor having dirt. Once the grass went in, um, the complaints usually all went away, they say it works, it works great, the grass soaks it up pretty good. So really the back half of the house is really the patio and the back half of the roof.
How difficult is it to develop or build a home with downspouts that all come to the front of the home?
Hello again. Um, there are, there are some challenges as, as the gentleman speaks up. Um, and I can speak to several communities where, um, where we are not able to direct the water at the rear of the house to the street. Uh, that's a topography issue, and in those communities, um, the city does a good job of ensuring and controlling through the building permit process that we have swaling or onsite retention, detention in the backyards to hold the water. This project is relatively flat and the gentleman is correct, we are above him, but I don't see a reason why on these lots that we aren't going to be most likely draining to the front, from rear to front. Um, and I think that as we go through the, uh, process, uh, we'll have design oversight and review where that will be critiqued and looked at. And so I believe that we and the city staff can work in a manner such that the expressed concerns don't turn into a problem.
Yeah, at least you have the dirt from the basements you dug up to, to work with.
We generate a lot of dirt.
Yeah.
Um, and, and truthfully, um, most of that dirt will either be incorporated into the mass grading or, or we, we typically send a lot of dirt offsite.
Can you pull up the grade?
In my C C and ours, uh, it's, it's in my C C and ours that you have to put in your yard within the first year that you live there.
So on the, on the townhome portion of the community, we as, as, as developer, builder, will install all of that. We do everything around the building as we go. Uh, on the single-family homes, we will, um, put in the park strip landscaping and then a front yard landscape package that meets, meets city coordinates or standard. And the backyard, we will require that within a year that they install the rest of, of the landscaping. We do run into some issues with the house that closes maybe after October. They may run into an issue of trying to get their landscape package done and complete. I'm not quite sure when the water shut off for irrigation is here, but that can be a challenge. We have had people who have had some legitimate hardships and have asked to stretch a little bit. Um, and, uh, but yes, as a general rule, unless there is a hardship, and even on the hardship, it's not like Mr. Jones, we're, we're just gonna allow you not to put in a lawn. We would ask for a plan of action with some dates by which we could approve it.
Mike, do you know what the lines, elevation difference between lines is?
Two feet.
Two feet?
Is that, do you have a retaining wall in the back of your house?
Yes, it's the, uh, sort of the table, it's half the ditch.
Okay. Pretty good retaining wall. I should certainly say that you can maybe get it all to drain to the front, that's pretty atypical, so I was wondering if you had something for your, your back?
Is that ditch still there?
No, just, it's just half of it, literally cut it now.
Did they?
Yeah. Makes for a nice bench room, a parking.
So, you cut it in half and pulled away the part from your property, left the part on the adjacent?
So, in short, we have mechanisms to try and help this make, make sense and try and, um, there's laws and stuff to help this. Again, in the middle of the night, if it rains and someone's moved the berm without us knowing and floods into his property, for sure, that, that's terrible. We wanna do what we can. Um, but we do make them short on the plans, part of the building inspections, make sure that that's in place, um, that they do. It's on the building plan, I just pulled one up, this is a similar one we see pretty frequently.
So you're talking about a further berm?
Yeah.
So, that's like the barest minimum on federal law is to have a further berm? Let's, let's go above the, I guess, because those go away that fast.
Yeah, but whatever you put in, one, it costs money, and two, you have to then remove it at some point. And the more permanent you make it, the more they usually want it gone. Like we've had them put tards, we've had them do different things.
That's what I was talking about, going subtraining with the...
If you can get to the street.
Get to the street. Then their neighbors are, then they're not pointing at their neighbor's window wells, cause they can't, they can't move it. It's already underground. With pop-ups in the front. I instigated that, um, in Vineyard along with the ones that couldn't. Had French drain systems put in the back on the smaller lots. So it was able to drain into, into a big French drain in the back, that was required by the builder to provide. Things to create, so, so you're not flooding your neighbors?
For sure, any of those options we would like as well.
So, and we wouldn't obviously require that of every, every home in this development, it would just be the ones on the adjacent, adjacent property.
Adjacent to...
Would be, would always be required is the deference would be with the engineers to determine whether or not, whatever what they were requiring was adequate given the elevation changes and the runoff. Which I suggest is, is the standard we maintain. I'd like to give deference to the guy who's reviewing the grading plan, the engineer.
So the, we can state that we need that, the means and methods of how they go about it would lead to the engineers.
Yeah, add that as a condition.
I think I'm in agreement that, that we have a, a mass grading plan that is designed with an overall intent. I believe that we then coordinate with zoning and with the building department to address issues, um, and that we come up with solutions. At that point, I am not a big fan of pipes and whatnot, especially small pipes that may get filled with dirt or may not get maintenance by the homeowner. And then if they do plug up, then we have another, we have another issue. So, I think my point is not to be resistant to, to thoughts and ideas, but that we don't pick one that we think is great when there may be other people who, as we work together as a team, can come up with a solution to protect the neighborhood.
Sounds great.
Completely agree.
Yeah?
So they do make, they do make, uh, pipes that are perforated that have basically a sock around them and they're filled with, uh, I can't remember what they're called, kinda like packing peanuts. It's filled with packing peanuts and sometimes it drains through, um, you bed it in, in pea ground. And as it drains through, it's filtering out as it gets towards the front. So then it's dispersing into more, instead of all going to one area, it's dispersing more throughout. So there, so in smaller pipes, that's a good way to do it.
So Jared, would you be comfortable if, if the developer and the engineers worked together to come up with a grading plan that showed the grading was sufficient and that it was gonna flow to the front of the home? Would that make you comfortable, comfortable enough to not feel like piping was required?
Like they, their solution may be piping.
So they...
But it'd be the front pipes or in the back in the French drain, adequate size to handle whatever the roof was gonna cut off.
I'm not gonna handcuff the severs.
So French, French drain, French drain, you'd be all right, as long as each of those ha, each of those homes were required in the rear? Where grading was questionable to put in a...
As long as they do the math for the square footage of that impervious surface, the size of French drain that they need in the backyard, absolutely.
Are you comfortable with that?
Jared, so what Jared's doing, and, and I appreciate it, he's asking us to obey the law, right? The, the, the plans have to be designed in a way that the water doesn't run onto his property. I completely agree, noted, perfect.
But according to the law, we've seen that that doesn't always happen. So we're just wanting to make sure with this development that it happens.
I'm totally against not having enough information and applying a standard and handcuffing our city engineers who haven't reviewed the, the drainage and grading plan.
There are three or four options that could work out with this, that they have the flexibility to choose.
We're batting the ball around here that each individual lot will be different and that individual lots should sol, solve its own problem, not require something that may not be needed anywhere. And so to request some kind of a, some kind of a, a fix-all deal along these lots is kinda ridiculous. Uh, they're going to have to have their own building permit and part of that building permit will be the grading plan. And when that grading plan comes out, then we have some really good engineers that can require whatever needs to be there. I think it's a great point that you brought up and it needs a little additional looking at if these are going towards you guys. And that's why I ask you about what kind of, of, uh, material is behind it now. Because some of those sites that you're talking about, I know what those places looked like at one time and you probably had a lot of green water in your backyard, you know, when it rains hard. And so those things can be addressed on an individual basis as needed. But I think it's a great point and it has been noted, and so I don't know that we need to go any further than that. It'll be taken care of by, on a lot-to-lot basis as the building permit is, is brought before the...
Real quick, I think this way he's getting at though is, the one I showed you where it just had a little drainage swell and a little earth berm? That's a minimum and I can't ask for more than that?
That's right.
If that makes sense, like if they submit that, that technically meets the requirement. I think what he's asking for is can we upfront say the requirement for the homes that back the existing lots? Or something similar to that, can they be asked to as part of the zone change, have this taken care of upfront to a little higher standard?
In your opinion, Michael, is the minimum inadequate?
The minimum allows the homeowner to go and move something that they don't like, which a, a berm in their backyard, it gets moved.
Is, is the minimum adequate to keep water off of Jared's backyard?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they, if it's not touched.
It is.
But it can't...
But it might be two years till then.
So there could be multiple floodings between now and then?
Exactly, then that's not, that's not...
But what, what property owner wants to address their neighbor and say, I'm gonna sue you because you flooded their basement?
I acknowledge it, we'll add it as a condition.
I mean, yeah.
It's unnecessary.
My comment simply is that, this is a, this is a universal problem. Right, it's not, we have this issue with big lots where there's not a great difference between the two. So I completely appreciate the concern, we get calls in our office, we send the Mike's guys as fast as we can. Um, so I know it's real, also I know that for the most part, once people get yards in place, whether it's some kind of ziruscape and you've got something to take energy out of water when it's moving across land and give it a chance to stop and percolate, or it's grass where it does the same thing, issues generally go away. I think we do try to follow just best practices when it comes to dealing with issues like this. I don't know why we wouldn't, well, and that's, uh, if there's any insight that we could glean from other communities, we're consistently doing that, right, sharing notes and looking for ways to improve. I think we'd love to, to take advantage of that. Uh, my only worry is that, uh, generally trying to engineer something in a lot of detail in this forum's not helpful.
We don't have enough information.
No. And frankly, I mean, I, I, I get the complaints, I know what the issues are, but I'm not one to try to prescribe a solution. And there's probably a better place for that, I guess I would just say.
Engineer.
The next step that we get to, should this move forward, would be I put the design engineer, at least somebody representing the firm that's done it to date, um, you know, on the spot to talk about the role that they play in coming up with a proposal that they make to the city to deal with things like this. Like Mr. Clark said, you know, we do have standards and if those standards get met, stuff gets approved. Um, so if we need to change our standards, I think we need to do it universally throughout the city and not just here. We have the same issues everywhere, uh, which is why also maybe I'm hesitant to talk about it.
Right.
A change of course just on this versus maybe looking at it bigger.
Cause that's the thing, if, if what you say is true where it's, this is an issue everywhere, what have we done in the past and what, what can we do in the future to address the issue everywhere to try and maybe increase those standards or, or fix it, so it's not as much of an issue that the city has to deal with? So something that we need to look into more.
And I think it's important that in a, in a meeting like this, someone gets up and says, "Builder, please be very aware that there are drainage issues." And builder goes, "Yes, we will add that to our list to be very extra aware and vigilant." I think you wanna be good neighbors and, and, uh, and, and build that. So thank you for expressing that and, and I hope you're saying noted, we're doing, we're being very aware. Okay.
Okay, was there any other concerns? I thought I saw another hand.
My name is Mike Conde, I live on the corner of Wheatfield and fourteen sixty South, right across the property from the Scala. And, uh, I have to say I've been waiting patiently for this opportunity. I'd like to address first of all, the purpose of zoning. What is the purpose of zoning? The purpose of zoning is to protect all property owners. And the rights of one property owner should not be, take advantage of another. And, uh, our discussion today obviously, obviously is the Scala property. And it's going to be a high-density, uh, property. And you're gonna ha, and you have high-density property adjacent to low-density property. And how do we get the two properties to mesh together? So that one property doesn't adversely impact another. And, um, honestly, I see three problems. Problem is the traffic, the second is parking, and the third is zoning, or, or, or safety. And it sounds like we're beating a dead horse here, but the entrance to the property through Wheatfield to connect that property is, we would like to see it eliminated. That would, that would separate the properties, that would keep less traffic going through our property and would eliminate some traffic and some parking. As you know, in every high-density, uh, development, the problem is parking. And those who have trailers, pickups, campers, boats, where do they park? They park wherever they can. And there, basically is very little parking inside the development, so they're gonna have to park outside. And our biggest fear is they're gonna park in my front yard because there's no other place. And, um, by blocking that off, we'll at least make them go somewhere else. And, um, by blocking that off, we'll at least make them go somewhere else. And, uh, the city says, "Well, we have to connect the uni- that we have to connect the communities." And you know, I find that very interesting because that's not universal. The property to the north that has just been approved, they don't connect. So that precedence has already been set that they do not connect. So the argument of having to connect the Escola property to the, the housing development to the west of it, to me, just doesn't hold water. There isn't a single home in that development that would be in favor of connecting the two properties together. And, um, I find it very interesting that the city and the city council think they know more than we know. They think that they have the, the right or the knowledge to do for us what we can do ourselves. It's quite offensive, frankly. And if you ask the developer, he himself would prefer not to connect the property, to separate them. It gives him more property that he has to use. It helps him and it helps us. And, um, you know, they're here, you can ask them, would they prefer to take that road out? That's what we want. It helps us and it helps them. And, um, I just, I just think that it's a solution that, that helps everyone. They have the right to develop their property. They're our neighbors and they should be able to develop it. I'm in favor of a development. We bought there knowing that there was gonna be a development someday. So it's no surprise to us that the property's gonna be developed. But how is it gonna be developed? We don't want it to be developed in a fashion that will adversely affect ours. I do have a few other questions that I would like to see addressed. Uh, I've been, I've, I've caught, I've read through their CCNRs. And there's a question that I have that has never been addressed and that is, what is the fee they're gonna charge their homeowners? There's no place in the CCNRs that I can see where they say anything about that. And my question is that if they don't charge enough, well, they won't have the funds necessary to keep the development in good condition. And so, you know, as a homeowner adjacent to it, I wanna make sure that they can keep, that they can ca- take care of their properties. I also note that, uh, according to the development, it looks like they're gonna do it in two phases, is that correct?
You know how many phases?
Yes, it's two phases.
The third question I have is I'd like to know who their property manager's gonna be and what their qualifications are. You know, um, and I don't know when that gets all addressed. Is it before the development's approved or is it conditional on that approval? So those are my thoughts. Uh, appreciate your patience in listening to me tonight. But, um, again, we wanna see that road blocked off. We wanna see, we wanna see the separation. And, um, I believe that helps the developer and it sure helps us. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Who wants to talk HOA? So first question, HOA fee. Do you know what the, the amount's gonna be initially? Obviously, that can change over time.
Our typical HOA fee for this type of community runs anywhere between ninety-five dollars a month and about one hundred and ninety-five dollars a month. The variables are, um, the amount of private road that we need to maintain, uh, the amount of open space landscaping that we need to maintain, and the big, one of the biggest things is whether we do or do not include bulk data in our monthly fee.
Include what?
Bulk data, internet data. So that is the, that runs forty-nine to sixty-two dollars a month. So that is, that is our biggest swag as to why our, our fees change or move around so much. I had heard a couple of, a couple of things. The CCNRs do address recreational vehicles. That has been presented in front of you. Uh, we do not allow them. Uh, they are allowed to do a temporary offload or a load-up, maybe if somebody was to, I don't know, need to maintain a snowmobile, I don't know, they go to do an oil change in their garage or something, we do allow for that. But campers, boats, ATV, snowmobiles, all those, those recreational, um, vehicles are not allowed on the premises. We don't even say that they can be there overnight.
Got a storm offsite.
A single-family and the townhouses, or is that? Correct. Correct. That's correct. So as to, has our, uh, HOA, uh, management company been established yet? No, it hasn't. We are probably eighty percent sure of who we will use, um, because we have a running history with them. But again, we, we hire a management company to oversee what is here and we do that in an effort to keep our community looking good, making sure that people are playing by the rules, giving a voice for someone who maybe is not comfortable going and speaking to their neighbor. You had mentioned previously, Shawna, that that's what people should do, but in today's world, people aren't as eager to go up and say, "Hey, I have a challenge and how to work, how do we work it out?" So we do, we have a management company that, that addresses these issues.
So a, so a neighbor in an adjacent neighborhood that has somebody's boat parked in front of their house can go and approach the management company and say, "One of your residents has their boat parked in front of my house."
Within our community?
If it's somebody outside the community that has, so if somebody in your community parks their RV in the neighborhood and so, that's outside of your community can, can, you know, I, if I'm these people that came and they're concerned that because RVs aren't allowed in, to be parked in your community, that they're gonna go park their RV in front of their house. I know that the normal thing is that if you have an RV, you go take it to a storage facility, but they're concerned about that. So can they go and talk to your management company and say, "Hey, their RV's parked in front of my stinking house"?
Hopefully, they would talk to the profit-
I hope so too, I hope so too, but you're saying that's not always the case.
No, I'm saying that the management company is available to field any and all compliments, complaints, or issues to work out. I'm here to say that in the nine or so communities that I'm currently involved in, and I drive these communities daily, I drive around the streets daily, um, because of some of my roles and, and the way that we do. You know, when we show up, there's no doubt, there's a lot of not in my backyard and people forget what happened when their house was built. But during the process, we are here to be part of the community and to be a good neighbor. And so we are out in our, in the communities surrounding us and, and we do look to see if we've blown trash. Do we spot it all the time? No, but when someone calls and says, "Hey, I've got some trash in your yard," we respond. If that goes to the HOA, we have a race relationship that they know exactly who to, who to get a hold of. And I am not exaggerating when I say, when I drive our perimeter communities, they're not full of our customers' boats and RVs. I, I'm not sure, I, I don't think that that's a condition that exists or that I am aware of that exists to a, to a great extent.
Do you guys plan on, as the developers, making sure there's money? I don't remember what it's called, but making sure there's money in the coffers of the HOA before you guys take off?
Yes, so, so as mentioned, we are governed by, by state statute. We will do a, uh, we will do an analysis on, on the exposures and the costs associated with long-term expenses for the community. Our typical reinvestment fee, I think is what you're referencing, runs about a half a percent. So whenever a home is closed, the purchaser, uh, uh, will fund to the HOA one-half percent of the selling price. That money goes into, um, a budget so that when we do turn the community over to the homeowners, cause ultimately that's what we'll do. We'll lose our, we'll lose our, our, our rights and, and our controls. But when we turn the community over, the goal, we don't want a phone call any more than you guys do. So our goal is to leave them with a healthy, uh, balance sheet and then we'll do a, an analysis of what the long-term costs are. And we will make sure that we have set them up with a process by which they can follow it and have money for five years down the road when they need to do some restriping or ten years down the road and they need to do a, an additional overlay or probably more likely is a, is a slurry seal. So we're not, um, when we collect our dues, uh, the dues are for the, the daily running of the community. The reinvestment fee is what we collect in order to turn over to, um, or to leave the HOA with a balance-
And those funds can only be used for specific things?
Yes, yes, very, it's very specific. It, it is very specific. So, so our intent is, um, we don't, we don't drive down our, our, uh, our monthly fees and dues so that we can attract our customer. We, we use a program called Everything's Included and we believe that we are bringing to the table what homeowners want. And as part of that, we believe that what homeowners want is to know that we did the right thing upfront and didn't set them up with a problem right out of the gate. Thank you.
All right, with that, I think we've possibly hashed out everything there is to talk about with this. If there's any additional count, uh, commission comments anyone wants to make or any thoughts they wanna add to what's been discussed tonight? If not-
Well, okay, I have one comment. Are we doing comments?
If, if you want to, yeah.
Um, I think, um, with all due respect, um, it's a, I, the more that I have, I'm on, in this volunteer job and I, the more I talk to the, the officials of our city and the professionals in our city, um, boy, they're professionals and they really care about listening and talking to and making, really wanting people to, um, be heard. And it's amazing to me how we keep finding things to talk about and address with each other. And it's a little bit offensive to me when people, when regular citizens who are not educated professionals in city pant planning and development think that they know more than the professionals. And that is not to say that we all need to, everybody needs to be part, come to the table and have the conversations. One hundred percent, absolutely. But to think that, um, that our city managers and our, and our, and our city, um, employees are not professionals is, has, has, is, is becoming personal to me. They really care so much about great city planning and development. And I personally feel, I know that, I, and I, I respect that it's difficult to have high-density come to, next to a low-density. But having that small connection between neighborhoods, um, is gonna connect you with your neighbors and have a diverse experience with lots of people. And this is gonna be a nice development where eighty-five percent of the owners are gonna live there and they're gonna be invested in the neighborhood, they're gonna be invested in your lives, they're gonna be invested in driving and keeping each other. I know that you care about keeping your neighbors safe and they will care about keeping you safe and connected in our Spanish Fork community. And the way that we all welcome newcomers into our, into our city sets the tone for how, for how our newcomers, um, settle right into our city. And so, um, I really feel like this has been a wonderful conversation with bringing up things like I hadn't thought about. Draining, you know, storm drains and a lot of these other things. But, um, I, I think that this is a great compromise for a family who has historically had this, had this, had this property and is the last to develop and that's the most difficult place. For neighbors who are, who care about their kids and our safety and, and, um, and where we are, but I think it's, I think it'll be a, end up being a, a good thing for the community.
I have a lot of thoughts going through my head, so I'm just gonna do, give it to you, chaff and grain and the, the bath water and the baby. It's Mike, right? I one hundred percent agree with the premise that you started with. Um, I think we probably see eye to eye on some of it, but not all of it as far as, I think it's vital that those of us sitting up here and on city council and the mayor weigh property interests and ensure that all property interests are weighed so that the quiet enjoyment of people's properties is as much as possible and, uh, realized. And if it's gonna be cumbersome and, um, offensive, the, the new improvements would be offensive to the other enjoyment of property rights, I think it absolutely, there needs to be conditions applied to alleviate those concerns. Um, and if conditions are not adequate, then the, the use app needs to be denied completely. Uh, so I actually try and weigh it, just as you said, Mike. Having said that, if you could, Mike, uh, Clark, can you put up the plaque for us?
Mm-hmm.
When I, so I've driven this a few times, I drive by it every day for, uh, taking my kids to ALA and I, I even drove this just earlier today. If you saw my black SUV, I was just driving this, trying to really absorb. But I, from my perspective, when I look at this and I drive by it every, every day, Del Monte Road is going to be widened, it's gonna be as busy of a road it is, as it is now, it will be even busier. And the main connection for the townhomes especially, um, is Del Monte Road, same with the single-family homes. I see a natural descent right here where there's actually, it, your, the entire development starts to descend. So there's a natural separation as I look at, at, at the development, as I drive it, between this and your subdivision. It, it just is, there is. And then the, this development is proposing to further separate the uses, or the density, I should say. Um, they're adding single, single-family homes that abut this, the, your single-family homes, the, the other subdivision. And then there, then there's gonna be a six-foot masonry wall all along where there's any townhomes or any, uh, townhomes about residences or, or there's an actual public road. I see, and then there's M-Tech and there's storage units. So along this artery, along this main thoroughfare, I think it's a great spot for moderate-density, um, housing because of it abutting Del Monte Road. And, and I also am very appreciative of the buffer here with single-family homes to preserve the, the property rights of the subdivision here. Um, I also very much appreciate that anyone who moves in here and anyone who buys a single-family home in any of these single, single-family homes, if they buy here, they know there's townhomes right next to them. Absolutely. You'd, you wouldn't have known that. If there were townhomes that abutted right here, you wouldn't have known that. You would, you would've been surprised by it, you would, you wouldn't have known. But what you would've known- But what you would have known is that this area for the last 10 years or so has general plan mixed use and has a stub road that appears as though it's going to connect inevitably. So it could have been a C-store, it could have been a hotel, there, there's a lot of things that could have gone in here. And instead it's single-family homes and, and townhomes. And in our given market, these townhomes are going to sell for a lot of money. And, and for me, as far as safety and traffic flow, and the, safety and traffic flow, I think more connections are, is always going to be better. And I also think that this connection, as far as the townhomes, are going to use it much less frequently than getting on at Del Monte Road. Despite that, this is a public road, no one in the subdivision owns it, it's, it's the city's. It was always planned on connecting to whatever came in here, that was always the plan. And it will continue to be the plan, and I, and I like the use next to the, the single-family homes here. As far as parking, it's much more than our ordinance requires. And all of these public roads allow for on-street parking. And the townhomes, where the townhomes are the most dense are over here. And, and also, which me, which means, and even in here, when there's parking here, there's all this on-street parking all along here where we have these units, which would i, in theory park along the street, if not in their garages. I think it, as I see the site plan, it seems more un, more unlikely than likely by a lot that people are going to drive, these residences are going to drive down here, park their cars and walk up the hill. I just, I don't see it happening. However, I do want a condition that this island is included. I think the traffic calming is actually good for both, for both subdivisions. Because I want, I want vehicles to slow down as they start to descend down this hill. And I definitely want vehicles to slow down as they approach a, a park, absolutely. We, we, both, it goes both ways. I think this subdivision is going to use this connection a lot to get to Del Monte Road. And I drove down here and it's windy and it's, it's not, it's not convenient. It, it won't be convenient for them, but I want them to have the option as I, as I'm representing the future residences that will live here and their property rights and their, their enjoyment of their property and their safety and their traffic flow. If Del Monte Road is closed for some reason, absolutely there needs to be another access for fire, for emergency personnel. It, it makes sense for everybody, it, it helps everybody, in, in my opinion. So I, my conditions would be, uh, commissioned that we, that we vote to recommend approval. I would add the traffic calming island as a condition, I would add a one-car minimum per garage unless the resident doesn't own a vehicle. I would add, I would make sure, ensure that it's 85% owner occupied and up to 15% rent, uh, rental. And then, and I would, and then other than that, I would go with the conditions and findings as staff recommended.
So I'm adding those conditions, that those details be specified in the CCNRs.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments, thoughts?
The only thing that I would add is, you know, the residents brought up concern of people parking in front of their houses just adjacent to the property. One thing that I have noted is that our police are very good at coming when those nuisance vehicles are present. And making sure that we're, we're utilizing that, if someone's parking their RV in front of your house and you know it's not yours or your next-door neighbors, they're going to come and they're going to take care of it. And I think that that's something that we've seen, at least where I live, with diesel trucks coming and parking, and the police are very good at coming. In a timely matter, if they don't have something going and making sure that they're taking care of that. So I think that is at the citizens, at their fingertips to make sure that, yeah, you're, you're going to be safe and you're going to, your property is just as important, like, like Joseph said, is we want you to be able to enjoy your house just as much as the future residents that are going to be here.
So Mike, you made a comment which, which I thought was very good. Purpose of zoning is to protect property owners. And I will tell you that every single one of us that are up here and as well as the city council, don't know them as much, but, but we absolutely believe that. I know, I know I do, 100%. When you think of who the property owners are though, in this case, you've got two sets of property owners. You've got the existing neighborhood and then you've got the property owner that has owned this property longer than any of you have even lived there. And so for me, it's how do we find a balance in protecting the property owners that have homes there and protecting the property rights of the owner who, for years and years and years, has looked at this property as this is the use now, but at some point in the future, based on what's in the general plan and what the city has designated for my property, I plan to cash in. And so my role as a commissioner is how do we find a balance to try? And, and we can't make everybody happy in all scenarios. What we can try and do is bring people closer together. And I can tell you that based on the conversations and the work and the discussions that we've put in as a commission and the, the emails and the talks and the discussions we've had with both existing property owners and, and the developer, we've tried to get there as best as we could. We do that, we do that often, that's what happened with the arrived townhomes to the north. We try and, we try and give, ask the developers to give a little and we try and ask the, the residents to give a little. You, you can't make everybody happy as much as I would like to and as much as we would like to, that's, that's not possible. So we try and bring everybody to the middle as much as possible and try and protect the property rights of all property owners, not just one group or the other group. So I hope, I hope that makes sense as to what I feel like my role is as a planning commissioner. There's no additional comment, then I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the proposed zone change and preliminary plat be recommended for approval to city council based on staff's findings and conditions, adding that the traffic calming island be included on Wheatfield Road, that a minimum one car per garage be enforced by HOA and included in the CCNRs that are recorded against the property, that the 85% owner occu, or their 15% rental capacity within the entire project be enforced, up to 15%. And those are, those, that's my rec, that's my, my motion.
I have a motion?
I'll second that.
I have a second, we'll do roll call vote. Commissioner Warnock?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Carden?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Ernest, Commissioner Mendenhall?
Aye.
That goes to the city council, any idea as to when?
Uh, most likely two weeks from last night, I think it's the 15th. So that meeting will start at 6:00, there will be a public hearing that night. We'll send out notices for that tomorrow, so you guys, your neighbors will see you. That in the mail and you signed up for the property, that type of thing. But unless something happens, it's the third Tuesday in, in June 15th, is that right? Yeah, 15th, so.
Thank you, all, for the multiple times that you've come out, the input that you've given, definitely gives us things to think about and try, try to improve upon in the future and ways that we can continue to make our community better. So thank you for being a voice and being a part of it.
I hope the, um, storage units have places for people to put their RVs and boats.
I think we asked and I don't know that they are. All right, next agenda item. I think we're on the cell towers, right? Where's my? Okay, conditional use permit for, do you want to, I guess we do these separately, right? Let's do the 3,400 East 2021 cell tower modification.
Thank you, we do request that the motions be separate, but if you want, we can discuss both at the same time. We do have a public hearing requirement for the conditional use permits. And appreciate your, your time tonight. And appreciate any interjections from Michael as far as the jazz game goes, I believe it's started, maybe? First one, this is 3,400 East 965 South. I believe this is a cell tower that was in existence when the area was annexed into Spanish Fork City. The request before you tonight is just to modify the existing equipment on the cell tower itself. So there you can see 3,400 East on the left side of the screen. There's a small home on the property with an large outbuilding and then you can see the rectangle highlighting the location of the tower. If we jump to the next slide, this is the existing tower, so you can see there's no additional attachments as far as sets of antenna, it's just replacing, uh, existing antenna and replacing existing equipment within the compound. I believe, uh, DRC did look at this and had no, uh, no conditions as far as operation. Any questions for staff on this item?
None of the usage is changing, none of the service to the site, just going to like 5G or just up, upping the antenna or something?
Just upping the antennas.
Any questions or comments?
This is just right off of Canyon Road?
No, this is off of Highway 6.
I'll hold on to the GIS interactive map.
So north of Quiet Valley.
Oh.
So you come off of Highway 6 up 3,400 East.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Google has it in a different place.
Guess we need a public hearing, didn't we?
So the road I always call the cut-through road is 3,400 East.
Okay, so for this one, let's move into public hearings. Is there anybody here that would like to address this agenda item? Saying none, we'll move out of public hearing. Any comments? If none, then I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the proposed conditional use permit be approved based on the following, based on the findings and other things that are in the staff report.
Second motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, 1, 300 East 2021 cell tower modification.
Similar request, um, this is a different location, it's the North Park. So if you picture the city park north of Costco, there along I-15 and Highway 6. Existing tower, existing facility, once again, the request from the applicant is to swap out existing antennas and equipment uh, within the existing compound and on the current lo, attachment locations on the pole. So if we jump to the next slide, you can see the...
See the shadow?
Yep, you can see the shadow.
I see the shadow.
If you jump to the next slide, Mike, sorry.
Probably is.
So here you can see the equipment at the top is what's being swapped out as well as the equipment in the structure within the compound. Any questions for staff on this one?
Any concerns from city staff on the either of these? Thanks. Okay, we'll go into public hearing for this one, is there anybody that would like to address us? Okay, saying none, we'll move out of public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we recommend the per, permission, oh wow, the conditional use permit for 300 East 2021 cell, cell tower modification with the attached staff report.
Got a motion?
Subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report? Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Title 15 amendments, public hearing for Title 15.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, if I may, address the proposed Title 15 changes and the next item both kind of at the same time. We're definitely distinct, but the proposed changes to Title 15 really, at least for the most part, have originated with the proposed zone change and a, and a potential use that somebody would like to make of, of the property that's the next item. But maybe we can cross that bridge when we get to it. The Title 15 changes really, uh, came about, um, with a company that would like to construct a state-of-the-art meat processing facility in Spanish Fork. Currently, that's a land use that we don't define. And as we talked about, the best approach to take in terms of regulating that in the community and how, uh, it would be best categorized from a zoning perspective, our legal counsel felt that it was most appropriate to go ahead and explicitly define the use to start with. So that is where, um, I think if we want to go through these, we need to pull up the staff report from the agenda. I don't know that we really need to, somebody here really wants to?
I'm pretty sure we got right on.
Go through them, gotcha, yeah.
We did our homework.
Of course. But it really is that meat, meat processing facility definition, which as proposed reads, "An enclosed facility with no feedlot, used for the killing or dressing of animals, including cattle, sheep, swine, goats, horses, poultry, or game animals, and the storage, freezing, and curing of meat and preparation of meat products." That definition that we have, that I think is on the next page, Mike. So again, I'm skipping to that because that's really the main event. That, pardon me, sorry.
I was hoping we were going to talk about agretainment.
We'll, I'll bounce back to that, but go in. There we go, maybe in, in just order of, uh, I think for us, priority is the city. Again, this is what started it all. Now, relative to this, uh, there are kind of two steps in terms of introducing a new use into Title 15. And you could certainly argue that with existing uses that are allowed, you know, for example, this might just be covered under a broad umbrella of agricultural uses. Frankly, I think it's actually more of an industrial-type use, so that's part also of why we felt like defining it was important, but then also then identifying what zoning districts it is permitted in and how it's regulated in those particular zoning districts. And at least for purposes of where we are today with this proposal, trying to maybe take a baby step, we are suggesting that with this definition, then the use be a conditional use in the industrial one zone or light industrial zone. Again, uh, facilities of this nature, uh, almost entirely have every bit of the operation happening inside an enclosed building, which oftentimes is one of the ways that we distinguish light industrial uses from other types of industrial uses. Very little of this operation will happen outside, uh, and I'll touch on that maybe in a little bit more detail in a moment when we look at a proposed concept plan.
Question, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you.
Horses, what do you do with horses? Why, why are they chopping up horses?
Making glue.
Member, member Roy Schrum.
You're Nebraska guy, you can help me out here, right? What are they doing with horses?
Dog food, I don't know.
So, uh, I don't believe that the folks that are here tonight to talk about what they would like to do have any intentions of processing horses, that's my understanding. I think there are other facilities that might fit into this category that do that type of thing. The deer in the headlights kind of look, yeah, you, you got me a little bit.
It's on the record, it's on the record.
Maybe I'll ask for some help with the experts here on that. But, uh, the definition that we've included here, there's a little bit of plagiarism that goes on oftentimes when we put these definitions together. Well, uh, community development folks do all the time. And we certainly did here, this definition was distilled from three or four others and that's, that's why that word's there specifically. But, um, that being said, just maybe cut to the, the end of the other part of it. We're recommending that this be then included as a conditional use in the light industrial zone as well with, uh, some parameters that would be built in, uh, the one to define a minimum size for a site that would be eligible to have this use conducted on at 20 acres. And with a, with a maximum number of animals that would be processed in a 24-hour period of time at 500.
Where'd you come up with that number?
In talking...
This, they don't have any intentions of going up that high.
And that's specifically where we got to that number, talking about their current plans and plans for growth and setting a ceiling that would allow for them to grow a little bit on the site. But, uh, um, just from my view, relative to some other facilities that we looked at as comparables that would be processing several thousand animals a day, I really believe that a facility that doesn't go above 500 is going to have minimal impact on everybody around it. For example, if the, the average vehicle bringing animals to the site, you know, semi-truck is bringing 40, you know, then at 500, you're talking about 12 or 13 trucks a day, that's not a lot of traffic coming and going. The amount of space that's required to corral animals, you know, 500 per day is just not that large. Everything that comes with having animals kept outside, you know, for the hours that they might be there. Everything that comes with having animals kept outside, you know, for the hours that they might be there before they're processed, uh, it, it's all just, I think the scale really does matter. There's not, in my view though, any, anything more magic than that. Uh, we understood that, that these folks want to start at three hundred or so animals a day and you know, again, have some room to, to expand, and I think we even asked them point blank at five hundred if they felt comfortable with that being the ceiling and, as I understand it, they are, so. Just that conversation, really.
Circle V doesn't fall under meat processing facility, do they?
I think they would as defined, yeah.
But they're currently not within city boundaries?
Currently not within city boundaries, probably not on twenty acres either. But if they were annexed, I'd view them certainly as a legal non-conforming use and that type of a thing.
Would you want to change the zoning if we were to annex them?
Uh, quite probably not actually where they are, I'd probably just prefer to look at as a non-conforming thing, yeah.
My biggest question is what is agretainment?
Okay, back to that, if you guys remember when we had a conversation about um.
Cows dance for you.
Amending the general plan.
Singing dance, singing dance.
Oh, here we go, right here.
Is that what it is, Dave?
Getting warmer, that would be agretainment, I think, it absolutely would be.
Michael just posted it.
Um, the uh, the family that has the corn maze that right now is just outside of the city limits.
Rex Larson.
Rex Larson approaching the Salem Benjamin interchange.
Yeah.
They were talking about some things that, that they do and things that they would want to do if they were annexed into the city. Uh, subsequent to the conversation that we had in your meeting, they came and met with some of us in our office and talked about the experience that they had working with Utah County to create a definition so that then they could get a business license and a permit to do what they're currently doing in the county. That's what this is about.
That makes sense.
So just being maybe one step proactive with the idea that if they're annexed, then this gives us the ability uh, with it being defined and with it being uh included as a permitted use in the agricultural uh um, and rural residential zones, that um they would be able to get a business license and operate without needing to go through this process and having text amended. Kind of same with the grain mill. Um, we have a couple of different things that can operate, operate that way currently in the city today that offer the services that we've, we've listed um as part of the use of a grain mill and then identifying a zoning district that that would be a permitted use in. Um, again, it's giving us the ability to issue business licenses and um to expressly permit uses. Um, maybe as zoning changes in the future, that's the thought behind that. And then the definition of a feedlot, that really does go back to the meat processing facility. The meat processing facilities, which and I appreciate a couple of you have brought up what the LDS church has and what they've done historically in the vicinity of Costco and Macy's. Um, they have processed meat um to different degrees over the years there. And I don't think many people know exactly what's happened under that roof and what currently does happen there because there's not a feedlot next to it. If there were a feedlot tied to it, which oftentimes there is, uh, when you're talking about really big meat processing facilities, the impact of those facilities on everything that surrounds it changes enormously. So by defining a feedlot, that gives us the ability distinctly say, you can have a meat processing, excuse me, processing facility in the industrial one zone, but you cannot have a feedlot.
That makes sense.
So, just again, clean, bright lines between what's allowed and what's not allowed. Uh, we think that's the best approach to take in terms of regulating um some of these different things. Um, and you know, maybe just not to necessarily get ahead of myself, but Mike, if you can bounce forward to the concept plan that we have for the zone change then, which I think is just on um exhibits that the applicant submitted. We talked a little bit about that, so this is the next item, maybe let's just stop here for a second. Um, so the uh, the subject property for the zone change where the meat processing facility would be located is on the north side of one thousand north, which is right here, it's on the west side of three hundred west, which is right here. Um, PDM Steel on this image is located right around here, you can see it a little bit better, I guess, over here, subject property in yellow. This is I fifteen here, uh, PDM Steel. Uh, Wasatch Pallet will be located, it's gonna be relocated from where they are now. At what I would say is the end of Center Street over to this property within the next year or two. Uh, this area is developing industrially right now. Um, the general plan uh would have uh all of the properties in the area zoned um to match what you can maybe see here, see this gray shade that we have over everything. The sub, I'm sorry, the surrounding properties largely are already zoned industrial one. Uh, so changing the zoning of this property here to industrial one would be uh not only consistent with the general plan, but also zoning that is found in the area. And then um, at least conceptually, what we've looked at, uh, Mike, if you can go to, it might not be the next page, but one of the one of the next pages, yeah, that one right there. Um, this is what the applicants have in mind conceptually. Now, should the zoning be changed, their next step would be to submit a site plan, which would have the detailed construction plans and engineering for the site and the improvements that are required to, to make the site work, that is, things like uh access roads, utilities, um, any things that are required as buffers. Um, they're suggesting, for example, that there be some walls constructed around certain parts of the facility and that type of a thing. Uh, that would all be provided in much more detail uh in the form of a site plan and also with uh conditional use approval requests which would come back to you as the land use authority for approval. Uh, that would happen with a public hearing on that. And again, that's, that's based on at least the, the proposal that's made with the Title fifteen changes right now. Um, like I said, the state-of-the-art facility is what, as I understand it, we're talking about here. Um, in my view, uh, regulated uh somewhat intensely by uh the federal folks that play a role in that. Uh, relatively small area for animals to be kept outside, under a roof, on hardscape that is clean daily uh and that um probably after some type of pretreatment ends up uh in the city's sanitary sewer system. Uh, different things like that, uh, you know, really, we're not talking about um what uh, you know, might otherwise be considered an agricultural operation, I would say entirely an industrial one. But um, those are the two parts really of what we're talking about tonight, the proposed, proposed changes to Title fifteen. And then for tonight, just a zone change to industrial one for all of the property here. Um, not just the site that uh we're thinking would be dedicated to the meat processing facility, but um also a site that would accommodate some other uses in the future as well.
We're not talking about the subdivision, that's just correct.
Thank you, thank you, yep, exactly.
You want us to approve the preliminary plot there?
Yeah, it's, no, thank you.
What's right here, that's not what we're changing.
No, that is currently zoned rural residential, those, I think each of those properties has a house on it now, there might be one that doesn't. Uh, but yeah, there are homes on those now.
Any of those neighbors submit a letter or, I know, I'm sure they've been noticed.
We've had questions that, that were asked about the facility, but I'm not aware that we've had anybody protest, so to speak.
And that general plan, right, even where the residence is, our show's industrial?
Correct.
Do those neighbors know what's, uh, what the proposed?
About to find out, public hearing.
Okay.
They should have received, they should have received a letter, everybody within three hundred feet.
Okay.
Uh, should have, they, they were sent a letter. I doubt that many people saw the sign that we put on a site this large, but that's been out there as well. Um, I also think the words out though, just from conversations that we have had.
So Dave, let me ask you.
Are we taking any public comments on this?
We've got Title fifteen amendment, which is a public hearing, but then we've also got the zone change, public hearing, do we break those out separately?
I think, I think uh, that's up to you guys, really, you should make separate motions certainly, but.
Okay, we'll do, we will do, yeah, let's do them separately, so. Any other questions for Dave? Okay, so we're gonna start with the public hearing on the Title fifteen amendment changes, which were the changes that Dave put up on the screen talking about adding in agretainment, feedlot, uh, meat processing plant. If anybody has, so we'll move into public hearing, if anybody has any questions about the Title fifteen changes, um, you can approach, state your name, and then the questions or concerns. Then we'll close that public hearing and we'll move into the public hearing on the actual zone change request from our, to.
Save the horses, save them, save the wheel. Uh, my name's Lynn Opelnop, I actually own the property directly north across the railroad track. Um, my, my one concern and one comment was that we referenced the church or the desert at meat processing. That's just meat processing, and I think everybody's fine with that portion, this is actually a slaughterhouse where we'll kill and gut and, right? I mean, that's, that's the proposal, so that's, that's the one issue, so with the.
That it doesn't, it will?
This will include slaughtering and processing, and that's.
Does the code allow for that?
It's, that's what we're putting in.
That's the amendment, so, so the whole meat processing.
Killing or of horses, remember the horses comment?
Thought everybody read the.
The meat processing is, is not an issue, it's the actual slaughter, killing, I mean, the waste, the storing the animals beforehand and it is a residential area, so cows are present, so.
Um, I guess a question, and maybe we'll ask the applicant, well.
Go through all your questions and we can.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Which one, which one do you?
Uh, straight north, so we're ten meters right there.
So what's your concern, what's your concern about it?
Is your house it?
The, the actual processing, the slaughtering and the, the waste and, and how are we gonna handle all that? The actual killing and everything there, so that is my house. Then the, it's, I understand this is a conditional use, so there would be some conditions, so fencing, blocking, what is proposed? So, that's, that's some of the questions, so.
Excellent. Anyone else on the Title fifteen changes?
Hi, my name's Eldon Neves, I live in Palmyra, which is uh just to the other side of Spanish Fork. Been here, uh, been in Palmyra thirty years and thirty years in Spanish Fork, we own a bunch of property on South Main here. I was a little concerned about Sister Warnock and her comments about being offended at common, ordinary, stupid citizens who wouldn't know anything.
That's not.
Thing is, Sister Warnock is that these developers aren't quite as squeaky clean as you might imagine. And then us stupid guys, we kind of, we sometimes know something. I've been on a commission like this and I know that sometimes, you know, you need to listen to the citizens. One of the things I like to do is put these things, table these things. Because John had talked about, John and I, John's out there, you know. And the citizens, they really don't know about this, they don't know about this. And I think we need to table this long enough, 'cause I know my neighbors and they're not, they would not be thrilled. Because if, if it's going right here, it's gonna come right at us. Let us have a little input on it, okay? I would like to have, if I had a month to talk to my people, my neighbors, uh, you can bet you'd need to have another, another room here to accommodate them. I would like to see this, both items tabled, so that you could get some input on this. The fact is, he said, are people angry? Well, they're probably not, 'cause they don't know. And, and I think your comment was, well, there's been some scuttled about going on. That really isn't information as far as I know. I haven't received any kind of a, of a letter or anything, and it will impact me. And also with uh, uh, I'm trying to think of their names, Opelnop. They called me and talked to me about it, and that's the way, that's the reason I learned about it. And so I'm really, really anxious or would very, be very anxious to have us put it on hold. Now, I have, I have a bunch of cows, and they have to be slaughtered, so I understand the need for that. But I also understand the need to be a little bit concerned about the neighborhood. Right now, it's not gonna be too long before we're gonna have to go to San Pete to get pictures of a agricultural community, because it's gonna be gone here in Spanish Fork. And, and I, I suggest that we go ahead and, and take a little time, look at it, table this, and let's see if we can get some more community input on it.
Don't go, don't go.
I'm not, I'm staying here 'cause they're around.
What specific items would you change in the amendment?
Well, see, I, I saw it about thirty-six seconds ago.
Oh, so you have plenty of time.
As far as the horses, I would like to see horses processed. But anyway, that's, that's not gonna happen, that's not gonna happen, because uh, you know, but there needs to be a, anyway.
So Eldon, real quick, so we've, we've got two different issues that we're discussing, we've got the zone change, which we're gonna talk about later.
Probably more, more issues, yeah, I know.
Right now, we're talking about what you see on the screen.
Uh huh.
Adding into the Title fifteen, the definitions of agretainment, feedlot, and meat processing.
I'd like to see all that put on hold until we can take a look at it, so I can take a look at it as well as the citizens that it might affect. And, and my, when I was on the commission for Utah County, to put it on hold for a month's not gonna hurt anything. It's not gonna hurt a darn thing to put it on hold for a month and let us look at it and get you some recommendations and some ideas why it wouldn't work and why it might not work. And even some of the stupid citizens, they'll come too.
That is not what I said, not at all.
We'll, we'll be here to, to give you some input on it.
So, you want some more input on the actual definitions, because you believe the definitions may be lacking or?
I would like to, to see if we can work on this a little bit, as well as the other end of it.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Eldon, where is your property from the site, where do you live?
I live in twenty-three seventy-three West, four thousand South in Palmyra.
Show me, Mike.
There's a.
I don't know for sure where it is, it's out there. And then I also own property of four or five different places in Palmyra. Nothing right adjacent to there, although I do.
But, but your concern's not so much about.
Outside the boundary that we mailed to.
By thousands of thousands of people.
You didn't, you didn't send to me, brother?
Absolutely not, we don't, we don't bail everybody in the county that has.
Okay, well, you should, you know me, come on now.
So your concern is how this definition being added could possibly affect you wherever.
Yeah, I, I'd like to.
And other names.
See, I'd like to just take a look at it and see, I, right now, I mean, I also, I might as well come clean with you, I leased from Spanish Fork City, the airport there, so we're right there with my animals also. And so, I'm heavily involved in the industry, the livestock industry. I should have had some water, 'cause I'm gonna not be able to talk in a minute. But also, I'm seventy-seven years old, so I'll be dead for too long anyway. But, while I'm alive, it'd be nice, and somebody said, that'd be great, if you died, I know they did, 'cause I could hear them.
You don't look a day over sixty-three.
Okay, so, anyway, that was, that's my idea, let's give it a little time, give it a month, let's get some people here. So we have some input and, and nobody can say, well, you, you pushed it through without us knowing, give us some time.
If we table this, if we were to table this.
Yeah, and you will, I know you will.
Wait a month, what will, what are you planning on doing in that time to?
Then I'm gonna study this, and I'm also gonna have a meeting with everybody in the community there. Give them an opportunity, ah, let me borrow your water, Sister Shawna. Oh, that's all right. In the bucket, I don't drink out of, I don't drink out of a bucket.
Are you against meat processing? On a, on a site that's less than twenty acres or more than twenty acres? Is there, are you against it, you for it?
I, there has to be meat processing or I'm out of business.
Oh, so you're, you're all in favor of this amendment then?
Yeah. You're a son of a gun, I heard you talk to this.
What I wanna know is, is.
I'm trying to figure out where the negativity is for you.
Is your negativity like not in my backyard?
Where'd you come, what city did you come from?
I live here in Spanish Fork, I'm a proud Spanish Forker.
Okay, are you sure? I need to see some pedigree from you, but.
I think it's important to understand the, the impact to the neighbors and to hear from the, hear from the um, the people that are wanting to be.
I agree with Shawna, I think it's just important to, if it goes through, that's fine, but let's, let's have some input, so nobody can say, we didn't know about this, we didn't have a chance to, to have any input on it.
Okay.
He was, he was, he was smiling, he saw I smiled at him.
No, what, are you?
I just can't wait, he's calling himself a gentleman.
You like him a lot, do you?
He is kinda cute, all right.
I feel like we're in the Old West, this is great. All right, Eldon, so your concern is just more time, more time.
More time, I like, and John, I know John'll go along, Shawna, you cannot turn me down, I know. So we're just dealing with a couple of you in the middle.
Well, we'll see, thank you, appreciate your comment.
John has a question, John has a question.
No, if you're finished, Eldon, I just have, I have a question for staff.
Okay, this is the staff here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, when we have these kinds of issues of uh zone changes and things like that. When we have these kinds of issues of, uh, zone changes and things like that, what is the city's responsibility in notification?
Three hundred feet or five hundred?
Just for the record.
So with the Title fifteen, because that affects the entire city, how does that work?
Uh, we provide notice on the.
Well, Title fifteen, I don't think that's the issue that Eldon's talking about if I'm, I mean, that's important to him. But I think more important is, is the zone change that allow this kind of facility to be there in his community. But his community right now isn't even annexed. Well, excuse me, it's, this property is annexed, but Eldon's property is not yet. So my question is, is just for the record, how many people were notified and in what geographical area? And what's required? Cause Eldon's right, you know, I mean, uh, when there's something that goes on in the county, they have the same kind of requirements. So what's our requirements?
So we follow the state law and I'll take a little bit of liberty in describing how I think that rule came about in terms of who gets a notice. Uh, any property owner within three hundred feet receives a letter advising them of this discussion that we have tonight and a similar discussion that we've had with the city council, that would be had with the city council. Um, public hearings, um, for properties in an area like this, oftentimes that's just adjacent property owners. You know, because properties themselves are more than three hundred feet deep or wide or whatever. Um, I don't know the exact number. We have the, we have a record of everybody that, that received that letter with that invitation to come tonight into a council meeting if they choose to. I'm guessing it's probably a dozen property owners. Um, for some projects in, you know, more densely populated parts of the city, it's hundreds that are within three hundred feet. But, uh, um, primarily the law is intended to provide notice to people that, uh, are impacted or the phrase actually that I would use that might have standing, you know, relative to something that happens from a land use perspective on an adjacent property, standing in a legal sense. Uh, and I think by and large, anything outside of that three hundred foot halo uh, has been found frankly did not be, you know, impacted, certainly not the same way. And that's why the rule is three hundred feet, not a thousand feet or three thousand feet or three miles. Um, text amendments like the chairman mentioned, you know, they're handled a little bit differently than, than a map amendment. Uh, but, um, uh, also notices provided in some ways that I suspect none of the neighbors around here would find. Uh, I think it's more of a formality. There's a state website we're required to provide notice on and some stuff like that, but really it's that three hundred foot rule. And we're required to post signs on property that I know people see because we get those calls, but I'll bet by and large they're, they're not that effective at helping to get the word out. So I think the key is, is, uh, just understanding, I think, uh, from my perspective that, that people that actually are impacted do get noticed.
One other question. The property that's in question tonight, how many owners are involved in this property? One?
I would love to let the applicant speak to that. I'd.
Great, just one.
There's Whit, there's Whit, there's Jerry and there's Chad, right?
Can we clarify one thing though? We're talking about the title amendment right now.
Yeah, right now, we're still.
We're talking about the two issues and we're talking about the title.
Director Anderson, a title amendment question for you.
And so, and the reason I'm asking, oh, go ahead.
No, 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 it's not you. John, no.
The reason I'm asking that question is, is that the applicant now has acquired the property from an individual. And it's my understanding it's one individual, right?
I think so, yeah. That's my understanding.
Yeah, one person. And, uh, although it's kind of a different polygon that makes that property up, it's one owner that's there. There is a railroad track that, uh, is at the back of that property which separates it from the north. But as soon as you go north, there's going to be some more, like Eldon's talking about. It will go further north because much of that property is owned by the same owner. So, you know, there are several issues there about, yeah, the, if you go three hundred feet, most of it's owned by the same guy that's selling it.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, west of it, not so much. But that's why I ask about how many notices went out. Uh, there's a bunch, there's some residences there that were, that are involved or part of the sales. Well.
Yeah.
Uh, just a comment, but I think we've got another comment.
Question?
Their question.
Uh, the language is meat processing facilities on sites of less than twenty acres that process five hundred or fewer animals in any twenty-four hour period of time. You have it listed as a CUP, conditional use?
Correct.
The inference then is if it's more than twenty acres, it's permitted. However, it's not in the permitted use table.
If we need to clarify that, we should.
Yes, please.
Uh, if it's a site that's more than twenty acres, we don't think it's eligible for approval as a, as a use period permitted or conditional.
Well, then I don't think you have to change anything.
Okay, that's our, okay, that's our intent. Thank you.
On the, on the notification part, I think we had newspapers, it was a little different. Now, you, you don't have that option. You know, I, I know they used to have it public, had to publicize it in a certain number of times and so forth. Now that, that's not an option anymore. And, and I, I'm not really in agreement with the fact that you just do those advertisements within three hundred feet. That doesn't work. Especially where we are. You know, I've got, we don't have neighbors that are that close.
Spray it out a little more.
Yeah.
If I want comment is the notice was set out on the, the zoning change, which I don't, I don't have a problem with the zoning change. It's in the master plan as, or as I won and I, I don't have an issue with that. I have an issue with the, the changing to the, the permitted uses and including killing. That's, that's my concern is, and that notice was not sent out. We were not notified. Cause when I read the land or the permitted uses, I thought, yeah, not a big deal because we'll process, we'll do whatever. But if we're changing it to allow killing, it's a different.
Tell me your name again.
Lynn.
Lynn, a question for you then. Are you against it? Just blanket, you're against it?
No, I'm not against it.
There'd be potentially conditions of approval that would be in line with protecting.
My wife will disagree, but I gotta say, conditions to approval.
Okay, so, so this Title fifteen, what it does is it puts it in the conditional use?
Well, I agree, but that's.
And, but the conditions have yet to be.
Correct.
Materialized, right?
Right. And, and that's what my concern is, some of those. And, and we.
Do you have suggestions? I'd be very, I'd be all ears on those suggestions.
We don't know enough about it to make those suggestions, yeah.
We have like a day to determine that. Our staff will.
No, and we know and Whit and these guys and we're not against it and it won't be, we just want it to be done right. And that's in the nice neighborhood and everything else. And Whit's a neighbor too. He's going to deal with it.
I'm the closest one.
Yeah, he's the closest and we're right across the railroad tracks and we just want it done right where it's a, and I understand a clean. It's going to be very regulated and you got PETA or whoever else all over you. So it's, they're going to be watching like a hawk. But we just want it done right in a, in a manner that's, that's not ruining the lifestyle of being in a residential area.
One of the nice things Lynn is that it is, it is slated to be a conditional use, which means.
But what is.
Conditions can be applied in a, in a meaningful, thoughtful way to protect your residents.
And we're open with that and that's all we're asking for right now is communication, open dialogue. Yeah, so.
Chairman.
Can I elaborate?
Director Anderson.
Kevin, I think most of the concerns we're hearing about are more fitting to the next subject. Everything we've talked about now that.
Yeah.
Is, is still subject to the applicant's, uh, zone change.
Yeah, I disagree with that. I think the zone change, I don't have a big deal.
But it's still conditional. We can still go over your concerns of operation and fencing can be part of their, of their, uh, subdivision. Their, uh, their zone change to that. Those topics can be brought up and, and addressed there as findings.
With the Title fifteen, the city could add whatever they want in here. We could approve it. It could be in here. Doesn't necessarily mean that it gets, gets applied anywhere, gets, gets used on any location. It's not until that location comes and tries to get approved for what's in Title fifteen that then, at that point, it becomes an issue. And that's when you address your concerns. But are there any, is there anyone in the room with a concern about the definitions that are actually going in Title fifteen? We're not talking about the meatpacking plant that's been a, that's being looked at and possibly going to get, we're talking about just the definitions of Title fifteen right now.
Dave, I have a question about that, this specific thing. Can you tell us about why prohibiting a feedlot is part of this and how that?
Impact that has.
The impact that has.
Absolutely. In, in all honesty, um, uh, I'm familiar with slaughterhouses and different things like that. Uh, operations that are maybe on this scale and ones that are much, much larger. Um, I'm familiar with feedlots. And you know that there's a feedlot within a half a mile of you, if one exists, and they've got a couple of thousand animals on there. Um, and as we looked at different communities and how they regulate operations like this and things like feedlots um, or other types of, of agricultural uses that really, really put a lot of animals in a, in a confined space. Uh, we believe that that oftentimes is the impact that's generated when animals are getting processed. That includes slaughtered and things like that. Um, not the industrial type operation that again happened, happens in an enclosed facility that's heavily regulated, you know, you know, very, very clean operations, different things like that. Um, uh, so it's the impact of the feedlot that I think we do not want to have in a zoning district that has facilities like, um, and I almost hate to throw out names, but, uh, and I won't, I'll refrain from that. But we have very, very high tech machining operations that supply companies like Boeing and Airbus and General Electric and Raytheon, uh, long lists of, uh, very, very sophisticated industrial uses in the community. And we don't want to compromise their ability to operate or desire to be here by allowing feedlots in the same zoning district. Now, the flip side of that, allowing a facility like the way we've defined it here, in my opinion, would not adversely impact anybody.
Okay, so quick question. So a feedlot is more of a noxious, obnoxious offensive, I mean, to the senses and such.
Smells.
But an enclosed facility means that animals are coming in and they're processed quickly. They're, it's an enclosed kind of situation.
Does the processing take place in, in an enclosed building or is it outside?
One hundred percent enclosed. Yes. Um, frankly, I don't think anybody knows what happens within the walls of the facility uh, or facilities of the nature of what we're describing, just like nobody knows really what happens uh, within PDM Steel or Mountain Country Foods for that matter, or a lot of other, other industrial operations that we have in the community. And that's where I start to see similarities between what these folks do, um, the type of impact that they have from a utility perspective and those sorts of things, which is not agricultural. I mean, it is industrial. It does require infrastructure to accommodate, for example, the effluent that they produce. Uh, because it is not, uh, being left outside and that type of a thing. It is, it is being processed. Um, uh, in enclosed systems and just like, uh, every other bit of effluent that we produce in different ways in the community ends up with the wastewater treatment plant and so forth, uh, power consumption and all those other types of things. Uh, really, uh, in my view, make this clearly an industrial kind of an operation in terms of its impact. Um, so those are the things that have led us to where we're at with what we've proposed here tonight.
And you're confident because you are confident that the conditions that you as staff would apply towards the meat processing facility and the slaughtering of animals would be such that it would have no effect on the neighbors?
I believe we get there. Yes, we're not there now, right? And that's the one thing.
Get there when there was an application and it was conditional use. You're confident that the conditions you come up with because you're so familiar with it that you're confident that everyone's property rights are going to be good and everyone's going to be happy.
We, we've discussed, we've discussed the operation, for example, these folks have in Draper with Draper city staff. We've discussed the operation to have in Payson with Payson city staff. We've contemplated, you know, uh, in concept, what some of the conditions would be. We've talked about some of those with the applicant, uh, to understand, you know, how maybe conditions would tie to how they already planned to operate and that type of a thing. One thing that I want to take a quick minute to do though, uh, and I apologize that I didn't do a good job maybe at the onset of describing exactly what's on their plate tonight. They are not being asked to approve the facility tonight at all. That's a next step, a different process that would come back before them when we're ready to talk about the things that you've said concern you. And I really appreciate that.
And you'll be noticed. David's accurate. He would have received notice for a conditional use application.
If your property's just on the other side of the road tracks to the north, you're within three hundred feet. You'd get a notice of that. Um, the very details of how they would operate, you know, things like noise, traffic, how they would handle any, um, any, uh, byproducts, waste, those types of things. Um, those could be incorporated as specific conditions that they would have to follow day in and day out as they operate. Um, those are conditions that oftentimes we as staff would formulate in a draft form and propose for them to consider when they approve a conditional use. Oftentimes they get changed as we go through the public hearing process and people bring up things that maybe we hadn't contemplated. And that's why we go through that process. But tonight, they're not being asked, nor can they approve the proposed use. Um, that would be the next step. And, you know, I appreciated the way you described what things you're worried about. Um, I think it is premature for us to say, we're good with everything and that's why the conditional use step becomes important to us so that when they've taken their conceptual plan and they've designed that fully and we know exactly what maybe the condition should be and that type of thing. Then, uh, we get to that point of, of spelling everything out in detail. But I just wanted to be clear about where we're at.
Very similar to what we just went through with the teeny property. That was brought up months ago. We took it.
With the concept plan.
The concept plan, going through it to where we finally made even two additional conditions tonight in the proposal to be added to their, their site plan or their operational plan in this case.
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, I do agree with Eldon that we were, nobody was notified of the change, the amendment fifteen, and that should be open to more discussion.
Right, so what is the ordinance for that notification of the Spanish Fork citizens that you're changing the zoning ordinance in the amendments?
Today, we post notice on the state website. Am I missing much? I mean, that's the big one. So and frankly.
On our city website.
Yeah.
And, and the biggest plea that we have is people can sign up for the notification. You can go on the state website and indicate you want every notification for Utah County, Spanish Fork City, whatever you want, and it'll come right to your email box.
Maybe.
Lynn, fortunately, the way that this is written, it would, if it, if passed, it would ensure that it becomes a conditional use permit. It would require, so fortunately, it's, it's, it's in line with what you were saying. It actually would alleviate the concern you had.
It's better than just part watch, the being a pervert, you understand that? That's fine, that's, that's fine. But I, I do think that it was worth it. We didn't even know that that's what Title fifteen amendment was, what the government acted, so.
Right, and if that's for the three hundred citizens, three hundred feet away from the property, it affects the whole Spanish Fork, yeah. It affects the whole city.
Did I answer your question about feedlots?
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. So we're still, public hearing's still open. Whit, were you going to make a comment?
I'd love to comment.
Come on. This is still Title fifteen, but you can say what you want and.
My name's Whit Hill. I'm probably impacted heavily, more heavily than anybody in here because I'm probably the closest neighbor to this. But a few thoughts I have is, I, I, first of all, I'd like to say how much I appreciate everybody's comments because if I could take everything back, I've, I've lived on that property for forty-eight years. I'm getting pretty dang old, aren't I? So if I could take everything back and have it the way it was and we could go down through the fields and do what we used to do and all this kind of thing, it'd be great. But my dad has a rail spur coming in front of his house right now from a pallet company. I can't sleep at night because of PDM Steel. The point I'm making is we're in an industrial area down there. And as, and as, and for some reason in our minds, we want to make it, and Eldon will probably get a better price for his killed cows because we have a kill facility here, you know, and that's how we make a living. Unfortunately, I can't make a living in the cattle business here anymore because there's a house in every field. So we've got to start looking at things a little bit differently. I understand that slaughtering and killing and all this stuff kind of sounds horrible, but I can't wait to get home and have a hamburger tonight for dinner. It's got to come from somewhere, you know, and I guess speaking very closely to the people that have made decisions on this property, I guess one thing I can say is, what do we all talk about Spanish Fork? We have a lot of pride in being agricultural. Is that true? Right? We love agriculture here. That was one of the key reasons why we, as a family and me as a neighbor, chose to make the decision. I mean, on any given day, I think there was four, five, six. I mean, on any given day, I think there was four, five, six people knocking on the owner of this property's door to try to buy it. I just sold a piece of property with my people I work for down across the road from the armory down there that has this monstrous crappy looking building down there. So pick your poison, you know, we're in it. And if I could take it back to thirty years ago when I took my shotgun and headed down through the country and shot everything that moved, I'd do it. But we're not in that time anymore. And I'm twenty feet away, I'm not twenty miles away like Eldon is. I'm literally twenty feet away from the property of this structure that's going to get built. And I just wanted to stand up and say, I appreciate everybody's concerns. I want it to be a rural area. We've got a pallet facility. I don't even know what all this stuff is up. The halls are doing up there, there's all kinds of things going on up there. We've got PDM Steel, we've got that area down there. And I think, I think that what I've decided to do is just embrace it all and say, look, this is what's going to happen here. And if it's not a meatpacking facility, it's going to be a great big ugly building right there because that's what we're having. I'm proud that we're going to have some agriculture. I'm proud that I'm a cow man and that I can say, hey, this is what happens to cattle at the end of their life and we can feed the country with it. We can have that in Spanish Fork. I would rather have that than hundreds of people pulling in to go into an office building every morning. And again, I'd like to just say I appreciate everybody's comments, but thank you very much.
Anyone else on Title fifteen? Okay, seeing none, move.
I, I think, just back to the idea of just put it on, let it, let us get involved. Let the community get involved a little bit with it. So at least they know what's, what's happening. I mean, I'm, I know, I'd like, it's sooner or later, something's probably going to happen. The only good thing about being seventy-seven is that you won't have to put up with me very long because I'll be dead, you know? But meanwhile, uh, it'd be nice to kind of, uh, at least have, everybody have some input on this. And I guarantee you, we'll have some people here and they can talk about this, this, uh, fifteen change, whatever. At least they'll have some input on it. And, and my understanding is that waiting a month's not going to kill anybody.
Let, let me ask you something, Eldon.
Yeah.
So we're only the first step of this process.
I, I understand all that. I know how it goes. I know the exact process because I've been there.
So it would go to the city council, which would be in a public hearing as well, which is in two, two to three weeks.
Uh-huh, but I'd rather have a little more input on this end of it. And then let's go ahead and do it. So you can, the process or the proposal you submit is perhaps a little different. Because I, I know they look at what you, what you do has some impact on what they decide as a city council, I know that. And, and so I, it'd be, I'd kind of like to see if there'd be a way for us to get some people there, talk to them, have them do some, get some input on this. It's, it's, that's what I'd like to propose. On both items, this item, and I won't talk anymore on the next one. But on this item as well as the next one, let's just give it a month and see what happens. And I don't know if you've driven by Dale Smith, I don't know if anybody know where that is, where that is up in Salt Lake and out in Draper. But there were definitely a lot of critters out there, bulls and so forth. It may not be a feedlot, but they have to be fed somewhere until they're slaughtered. And, and I, I know, Whit, you gotta, you gotta kill stuff. And I've killed plenty of critters and I still do, if something has to be killed, I do it myself. Uh, and I know where critters end, you know? And so I'm not opposed to that. For sure, I'd like to see horses go somewhere. But, but I, you know, let's give it a month and see what happens. Let's look at it. Let us give a chance to get people there and look at it. And I, we're still friends, right?
Even now, I was.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Smith. Obviously one of the Smiths from Dale Smith Meatpacking in Draper. Just a comment or two, um, regarding the tabling of the item. Um, I'm not saying that everybody in the community knows about this and has had plenty of time to learn about it and make their decision, but what I will share with you is that we've been talking with the Hill family about the potential of this project since very early this year for several months now. And I can assure you that within the agriculture community locally as well as broadened out, a lot of people know about it. Have you ever heard of the Rumor Mill? The Rumor Mill is alive and well and I can, I can just assure you that, um, a lot of people in the Palmyra Lakeshore area that are in the, the beef business, raising livestock, they're well aware of the potential of this. I'm not, again, I'm not saying that everybody knows about it, but a lot of people do know about it and yes, there are some that have concerns. And we've, we've received a lot of input individually, uh, that's very supportive. And so I, I wanted to share that with you. Um, I also wanted to just make note that the, the beef, the, the meatpacking industry over the last twenty-plus years has really consolidated nationwide. I mean, we're down to four big companies, Tyson, Cargill, JBS, and National Beef that harvest eighty or eighty-five percent of the, the beef and the swine in this country now, and, and that's really dangerous. It really is. They, they, they've basically monopolized the industry. And we're a fa, we're a, a small to medium sized family business trying to relocate and continue the legacy and the service that we provide to dairy farmers and ranchers across Utah. And I can assure you, if we don't, it's going to have a real negative effect on livestock and agriculture in Utah. And after a lot of consideration, we've kind of honed in on this Spanish Fork area as a, a good location, uh, to build our business or relocate our business. In Draper, in a year's time, we harvest about seventy thousand cold cows. If we close down and don't rebuild or relocate, seventy thousand cows will go to the big companies and the industry will be more consolidated. So I, I think that we offer a real opportunity and service for Utah and, and the helping to keep agriculture alive and well. I agree with Whit, Spanish Fork particularly's always been, I used to call it Cowtown, Utah. When I was a kid, I, I came to two livestock auctions every week with my uncle. Um, one on Main Street and one just west of where we're talking. They're both gone. So it's becoming a struggle for livestock people to market their animals and to have them harvested and, and get a fair price for them. And if we're allowed to, to build here and, and continue our business, I think it'll be a real benefit, not only for local producers, but really the whole inner mountain west, so.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
What's your purpose or reason for relocating, first of all?
Um, our facility in Draper is old. It's not efficient, it's not competitive to compete with the, the big boys. Myself and Matt and Mike Smith, our, our fathers, um, own the business in Draper. They've reached retirement age, they're ready to slow down. So the property has been sold in Draper and, and we're looking to continue and relocate to a favorable area. Sorry, my lips are really dry.
Water too?
Yeah.
Holy must be thirsty.
Yeah, it must. Makes us nervous, I guess.
So if you guys were allowed to relocate and everything goes through, do you see yourselves expanding in the future and your, your company growing? Are, are you planning on building in a location that expansion is possible? Or are you pretty much set on what, what, what we build is probably what it would be until we're done with it?
Well, if, our, our goal is to start with around three hundred head of livestock a day. And I think the conditional use permit is five, up to five hundred, is that, that's what, that's what we're talking. So I would hope that we can get to that level. But I think if we do, for this, for this area, for livestock evadability and for, you know, our, our desires as a business, I think that would be a comfortable level.
And you guys plan on doing beef only?
Uh, to start with, uh, Mike and Matt run us a plant in Payson where they harvest a, a lot of pork and so, and there would be the thought of doing pork in a separate facility.
And does your livestock come from local farmers, local ranchers, or where do you typically get your livestock?
Like I said, about, we, we harvest about seventy thousand head a year and roughly half of those come from Utah. We get quite a few from Idaho, a few from Wyoming, Montana.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that wants to address the Title fifteen amendment proposal, change proposal? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move out of public hearing for Title fifteen. Probably ought to make a motion on this one before we move to the next.
Do you have any comments from anybody?
Yeah, thank you for reminding. Anybody have any, any commissioners have any comments on Title fifteen?
I'll make one comment and that is, in all due respect to Eldon, I think that this, uh, that this Title fifteen is something, or the Title fifteen amendments are something that are pretty innocuous unless someone is here. And I think it's, uh, a document that affects the, 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 the operation that may be here, uh, but it would also affect anyone, anyone else that would want to come in here. So I think we have to separate the two and I think that this one's straightforward and I really don't have a problem with Title fifteen amendments at all. That's just my opinion.
Well, and on top of that, the, we've, we've had lots of conversations and, and held over Title fifteen amendments in the past. So we, we take those, those seriously and, and to me, this looks like it's something that makes sense.
I'll make one more comment that, that relates to, to both of them.
I don't get one, dang it, all right.
No, I, I'm going to make one more comment and that is, is that I come from a, uh, an agricultural background and I actually spent my first eight years in Draper. Uh, lived close to probably one of you guys' grandpas. And, uh, I remember going out to that plant. I also remember the two auctions that were here in town, they were great, they were great for our community here. Uh, the guys that I know that have cattle now, if you want to sell them, you got to go to, you know, you got to go a long ways away to find a place to sell anything anymore because we don't have auctions here. I guess Salina is the closest.
Yep.
And so we're losing our agricultural industry and I would like to see it preserved as much as possible. And one of the things that, uh, interests me about this proposal is that it's being done in a way that we're not going out into the county and taking a chunk out that's in agriculture. It's in agriculture now, but it's right next to industrial. You know, we've got PDM and everybody else along that street, we've got the airport down there, you know, uh, and, uh, and so this in a way is, in, in my feeling, is a way to preserve agriculture in our county is to give us an opportunity to have somewhere closer that can do this. It's my understanding that now quite a few, uh, farmers now, or ranchers I should say, uh, actually contract with producers, or excuse me, I don't know whether that's the right word, but the meat producers to buy herds of cattle on site rather than at an auction. And so, you know, we're making that a little more easy to do. You know, that's something that Spanish Fork really was, was the center of agriculture. You guys don't remember it, but the city trucks used to have a cow, horse and a pig on the, on the side of the door because we had those, those facilities here in Spanish Fork. So that's my comment and I know it doesn't completely, uh, conform to just Title fifteen, but it'll do for both of mine. So there you go.
My, a quick comment, quick comment on Title fifteen amendments is, uh, of everything I've heard today of what everyone here wants and desires, the, these changes are consistent with that and I would be surprised if, uh, Eldon came up with concerns at city council that were contrary to these changes, but have at it if you want, but I, I, as a commission, I would recommend that we approve these changes or recommend approval of these changes as well.
Okay.
Go ahead and make the recommendation.
Yeah, you want to make a motion?
I make a, I make a motion that the planning commission recommends approval of the red lines to Title fifteen as presented by staff.
Second.
We've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's going to city council in a couple of weeks. Okay, let's move on now to the zone change discussion, which hopefully won't take too long since I think we've discussed it thoroughly. Um, Three G Horizons proposal involves changing the current zone from RR to Industrial One for the properties, um, within the black lines on the. Who, do we, did we already discuss this? Is there any more you want to say on this, Dave?
Nope.
Okay, let's move into public comment then on the actual zone change proposal. If there's anybody from the public that wants to add to what's already been discussed, we are now in public hearing.
That was fun. Get up there, I'm going to do it. I haven't talked this much in a year. I'd just like to say that, uh, it looks like everything around that property has changed and that's what it's going to be, so it looks like it makes a lot of sense to me to do that. Again, I would just like to say how much I respect the feelings of everybody in wanting to keep that rural. And we can't, it looks like it's getting surrounded by all that other stuff, so it looks like the zone change makes a lot of sense.
Thanks, Whit. Anyone else? All right, move out of public hearing. Any comments from commissioners?
The only comment I have is it, from the comments that have been made tonight and the concerns, it seems like everyone is okay with the zone change, it's just that conditional use. So that would be, like I said, the future, uh, meeting and, and public hearing. But like Whit said, it makes sense with whatever, what is all around it and surrounding it and going in.
Yeah.
You know, I'm going to make one more comment and that is, is that we do have a facility close to Spanish Fork that's doing exactly what we're talking about and that's Circle V. You know, I don't know how many animals were processed at the Junior Livestock Show a month ago, but it was a lot, a lot of hogs, a lot of beef went through there. And, uh, we have a resident sitting back here in the back that's about the closest neighbor that I know of to Circle V. And, uh, oh, I've got one more. But, uh, you know, uh, for anybody that has gone and got processed meat from Cliff or his kids now, uh, you know, it's an operation that can be a little noisy and, you know, it's not the, for the faint of heart in some places. But, uh, it's a, it's, it's a processing plant and like Whit said, you know, a hamburger comes from someplace. And so we have a bit of that in the community, uh, community already. It's not foreign to what we have. And, uh, you know, I think that it's a, probably a good choice to have it in a place that is, that it, that you can choose your neighbors. You guys are going to add, you guys are going to own all the other parcels as well, so you'll choose your neighbors. You guys are gonna add, you guys are gonna own all the other parcels as well, so you'll choose your neighbors. And it's gonna be a state-of-the-art facility, I would hope. It's gonna be a lot quieter and a lot more, a lot more publicly. Appeasable or something, however you wanna put it. So anyway, I, I think it's, I think it's a good, a good spot for this. And I think that this business will enhance the community and the rural area that isn't part of Spanish Fork. That's my comment.
Can I ask one question? What's the hours for, when do you process?
That's a good question.
Are you sure the comments come to the microphone, please?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Lynn, you wanna?
Lynn, come on up here, lost it again.
Ask your question.
It's a good question.
Then the answer.
Just hours of operation? Do you just process in the morning or kill in the morning, then process rest of the day? Just for information more than anything.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Just kind of explain your process of operation.
This would be subject to the city's noise ordinance.
And also, these are just more, these are more specific to a later conditional use application. Just everyone, let's wear that.
So in, generally speaking, my name's Matt Smith. To answer your question, we're currently starting our operations at five AM in the morning. And we're processing till four PM. And then during the, for cattle arriving on the premise, we do have cattle arriving throughout the evening hours. And part of that, part of that is due to, to help the, the individuals hauling those animals. Avoiding traffic hours and trying to transport those animals as humanely as possible. Thank you.
Noise levels was, I think, the other question.
That's an interesting question. So noise levels were also regulated from USDA on the handling of our animals. And humane handling practices are very scrutinized by USDA. And so we are very conscientious on how the handling of those animals are, are conducted. To eliminate vocalization and control the noise that could potentially happen.
Thank you.
Does that answer it?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Guess the only other comment I've got is, you know, back to what Whit said. I loved what Spanish Fork was thirty years ago, when it was, you know, fields everywhere. I grew up on a dead end street next to a cornfield. Pity the farmer that had to grow that corn and cuss us out every time he found a little maize in his corn that wasn't supposed to be there. But I also love what Spanish Fork is today and what Spanish Fork is continuing to become. We, we have the growth that we do in our community because people wanna live here. We live in a great place. And I, I think it's great that, considering all the agriculture and what you and your dad have done through the years. That you're finding a use that's industrial, but as close to agriculture as, as you can and in, in industrial zone. I think is, is pretty cool. So I think, I think that's neat.
I echo that. Welcome, Smiths. I hope it all works out and we apply conditions that work for Lynn and his wife, and I think it will.
Through the actions of past applicants, I mean, it's created an island surrounded by the zoning we're going, being asked to approve. This landowner needs to have those same opportunities.
Totally agree. There's no additional comments, then I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the three G Horizon Zone change be recommended for approval based on the findings and conditions.
Got a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Thank you as well for, for all the comments.
Halftime score is fifty-one seventy-five. Halftime score fifty-one seventy-five jazz.
Smiths, Smiths, my hope is that one day the In-N-Out Burger I eat came from your plant.
That's a, that's at the half, seventy-five at the half?
Yeah, fifty-one seventy-five at the half.
If there's seventy-five at the half, it's over. We've got, we've got two more items. How?
I know Mr. Warren's been waiting patiently, but if we need a quick break.
Let's take five, yeah. Just real quick, five minute break.
Mike, you got your score.
Welcome back. Approaching the finish line.
We are. So we've got two more agenda items. Looks like the next one is the Warren proposal. Changing current zone from RR to C two for sixteen eighty-four South Mill Road.
Thank you. So up here on the screen, you can see it's at the intersection of Mill Road and Arrowhead Trail. The request to go to the C two zone is consistent with the general plan land use designation for the property. You can see it's just being applied to the area that's outlined. If we jump to the next slide, Mike. This is the area that we're seeing the request for the RR to the C two. And so at this, at this time, we're looking at zoning only. There's no development approvals or any, any changes in access or anything like that. Requested at this time, but any of that would come to you in the future.
Don't they already have a sign on their property, commercial?
Commercial, land for sale?
Yeah. What's the master plan for that area?
If you pull up the interactive map, it almost matches.
Can you show the general plan?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Hey, just right click four times, that'd be good. No, no, didn't work. You didn't do it right.
If we apply the general plan, please? There you go. There's our commercial.
Where's the seventy points, one, six acres in that red blob?
Right there. I think we've already mentioned with that intersection what it is. It makes sense to have the commercial right there, so.
Any interest, are you getting anyone talking to you on this for commercial uses?
We've talked to Mr. Warren, and he has, and I think it's bona fide, commercial uses, uses that would be allowed in the commercial two zone.
Like Topgolf?
Topgolf.
Not Topgolf, not anything close to that, but things that would require the commercial two zone. Thank you, Director.
So we're going to, it looks like by the map, we're going to subdivide off the, the home lot, off from this, what's shown here.
Wouldn't subdivide it, but it would have different zoning on the same parcel until it's subdivided.
Where's the access to the home? Is it that Mill Road driveway to the north?
Is that Mr. Warren's residence?
Correct.
The applicant's here. We could have him come up and tell us what.
Yeah, let's.
I have a couple of questions, a couple of questions though.
Oh, you haven't seen any of them yet.
What are they gonna do with the slaved horses, though? That's the question.
Pardon me?
What do they do with slaved horses?
They eat them.
Send them to the glue factory?
No, they eat them.
They eat them? Is it dog food or like pet food, or is it?
Canadians eat them. Sorry, I better be careful.
That's good. I needed that.
Guy here in Spanish Fork that actually, he used to buy horses and take them down to Arizona to have them processed.
Anyhow, what would, can I tell you about it? You can see, it's over there, you can see my driveway going up the road right there. Comes down to my home, right there, there's the driveway, come drive down there, run around to my home.
We, we're supposed to have you stand at the microphone, though. They have, we're supposed to have you stand at the microphone and use the pointer.
I'm Joe Warren, sorry. I've lived out there for twenty-five years. I don't know how to make these things work.
Don't look at it.
Is your home gonna stay there?
Yes.
There's a silver, silver button on the side.
And the zone change is, is not including the home, is that correct?
Correct. It's that, there's the driveway, this goes right out there like this and cuts back right here by this barn, and that is it. And I think I sent a map with it showing it a little more clear today that we should have seen. It's sort of there.
So is, in the people that you've talked to, are they interested in purchasing the entire property rather than just pieces?
Yeah, I don't want to sell it in just pieces. I'm not a developer. I don't wanna go through.
But are the people that are interested, are they looking at having one business there or multiple?
They're looking to having one business there and possibly having two or three others.
Which business?
Pardon me?
What business?
The one that's gonna buy the place.
Good answer.
Don't worry, it's, it's not on the record.
TV viewers. There's only a million TV viewers that are watching.
I'd just soon not say that. That's the requirement.
Good answer. No, it's not required.
It's consistent with the general plan.
It's not a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm dying to add one thing. Mr. Warren's talked to other people about buying the property. They've made relatively formal requests of the city, townhomes, storage units. Projects that were a combination of townhomes and storage units, a mixed-use kind of a project that had storage units. Lots of different things that are not consistent with the general plan. So him being willing now to take this step with what seems to be a modified buyer. This is what we've been asking Joe to do for a couple of years, and I really appreciate where he's at. So that's at least partly why we're excited his staff to.
Do you know what the use is gonna be, or what it might be?
I, I've talked to a couple.
And are you generally okay with the C two, the potential C two use that one go here?
They'd be a great, they would be great fits for the neighborhood, I think.
So what, what was it again?
Yeah, it's what Joe says, commercial uses that, that somebody else disclosed.
All right, good. As long as, I'm glad you're in favor of it. That's good. I mean, Director Anderson.
Question for staff. What, what is, Mill Road, if this goes to commercial, what, what improvements are gonna be done?
It'll be widened and improved.
But to what? To what, though, will, will be?
With the site plan application and all kinds of.
It's a collector road, so it'll be a three lane facility.
I don't know if it's too direct or too that specific. At the intersection, maybe widen pretty dots of left turn lane or right, so that would be wider.
What I'm wondering, what I'm specifically thinking about is we've had many issues with just up on Del Monte, not having enough room. And if we should be looking ahead to making sure you have like the dedicated right.
It for sure needs at least a dedicated right, like for, at least.
I was getting there, Joseph, but thank you for, thank you for interjecting.
I use it, and I know. I use it a lot.
Yeah, so. With the development of this property, which started building, so what we want here, I imagine it'll be the same here, but UDOT's very particular.
Thanks. With what we're talking about going on in here, some current commercial being developed there, it'd be good to have that in place first. You know, as well, maybe not first, but with the development, yeah.
Well, if you go out there and look right now at those two corners and the two fences that are there, they're already gone because the trucks are going around in the turn right there.
Mm-hmm.
You can't do nothing but get better.
I'm gonna do that right there on that right there. I'm serious. Take my kids to school, come down this way to get other food.
Yeah, it's not like that.
Okay, let's go ahead and move into public hearing on this one. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address, just state your name and?
Dwayne Kirkham. I live right next to the Warrens to the north. Just a co, a couple of comments. I think this fellow had said that, you know, if Warren's property goes to C two, then Mill Road's gonna be improved and widened. Well, that promise was made when that other development was put in, and it didn't happen.
Which one? Which development?
That Mill Road development across the street. You know, in fact, if anything, with the increase of traffic, which, you know, they said, oh, it was gonna be minimal. Well, it's not minimal. It's like a freeway out there nowadays. You and, if you widen that road. People are just gonna drive faster and faster and faster. It's about sixty miles an hour when they turn a corner until they hit. You know, down past that retaining pond that they put in there, or I guess it's water feature what it is.
Do you know the actual speed limit there by chance?
Twenty-five. Well, it's twenty-five.
It's twenty-five.
Really? Wow.
But it, it doesn't get any better. This is, I'm, I'm just right here. I'm, I'm right to the left, to the left, right there. So, you know, Mill, Mill Road's a real big problem, you know, and it just, nothing happens to it. You know, the road just deteriorating and nothing happens to it. You know, I, I needed to do something with my irrigation dish, but I've been telling, I've been told for the last fifteen years that we're gonna do something with it and was gonna expand it. And it never happened. So I just, you know, that's what my dish looks like. Anyway, the reason I wanted to come over is, would you put up that general plan again? With the colors on? What, what does that mean? What does that mean?
So the red is commercial and the estate density residential is lower density.
Well, who determined that part of my property is commercial? And if it's commercial already, why are we going from RR to C two now?
It's not commercial already, so there's two separate things that we look at. We've got what's called the general plan, then we've got the actual zoning map. So the general plan is basically looking at property throughout the city and saying, in the future. If the use of this property were to change, this is what we would like it to become.
What's before us right now is to move Joe's property, and I'm not against Joe and Lisa selling their property. I'm not against doing that. I figure property owners ought to be able to do with their property what they want, to a point. You know, so I, I'm not against them selling their property to go to commercial. The reason I came over is I wanna know what happens if you approve going from RR to C two. What kind of businesses go in there? How does that affect me? What happens to my animal rights?
So your animal rights don't change. Whatever business goes in there would be required to put a masonry wall between your property and their property. You, as long as you live there, can continue doing exactly what you're doing. Your, your agriculture looked like, or RR looked like, so, so you have, all of your property rights, your animal rights, nothing changes.
What, what does a masonry wall mean? You mean like a freeway?
Six foot stone wall, six foot brick wall, something that's solid. Not just a wooden pick fence or, or a vinyl fence. It would be, it would be a masonry wall. As far as what uses could go there, once it's commercial two.
Trying to pull them up real fast.
Probably not a Topgolf, that might be.
No, I see two. But just not big enough.
More than likely on the corner with an intersection like that, you're looking at gas stations first.
Are, are you saying that C two puts a gas station in there, possibly?
Saying C two allows for a gas station to, to be there.
This doesn't have an index on the I-Path.
Yeah, gravy.
Anything commercial, you could have restaurant there, you could have a chicken fingers, whatever. You know, those are your options with C two is what's on there. You could have.
It's my understanding too that we're not rezoning his property.
We're not. He's, he's just asking what possibly could be next to him with the change that we're discussing.
Well, it's not just me, but, excuse me, it's not just me, but, you know, it is a, a rural residential area. You know, and again, I'm not opposed to Joe and Lisa selling their property and having it changed to C two. But, you know, there's gotta be some latitude given the residents around there now for the type of businesses that are gonna go in there.
I can, I can actually tell you that the permitted uses, I'll, I'll tell you right now. So when, if it's rezoned to C two, if it, if it's successful. Art galleries and studios are permitted, full-service car wash, childcare centers, churches, convenience stores, which is a gas station. Entertainment uses, financial institutions, hotels and motels, instructional studios, lube centers, medical and dental laboratories. Municipal facilities required for local service, office supply, copying, printing businesses, offices, outdoor display area. Personal service businesses, private clubs, public utility facilities required for local service. Repair services for small appliances, bicycles, jewelry, and similar items, restaurants, retail uses, tire centers. Uses subject to conditions, seasonal sales and special events. Following uses are permitted if operated from a permanent enclosed building and may have outside storage or display of merchandise, which is customarily, customarily part of such. New and used automobile, motorcycle, boat, truck, recreational vehicle sales and rental facilities and repair services associated with such facilities. And then um accessory buildings and uses such as a caretaker's residence would be allowed. And then there are development standards, design standards, setback standards, parking standards, signage standards. Um that's all in the in the municipal code.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, but just the last couple of deals. Uh so if you do do C uh do approve of C two for that, uh would there be opportunities for the residents out there to come and oppose businesses that they wouldn't want to have there? Not that we're opposed to business, we're opposed to certain, yeah.
Not the permitted uses.
If, so everything you read is per- permitted use.
If anything I read as a permitted use is a a property right that's granted when the zone changes. It becomes a new property right, uh that use is permitted, therefore property right.
Okay, that's all I got.
Anyone else? Alright, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. Any commission comments?
I think this is a great use for that uh corner and meets the city's plans for that area. I support it.
So that area's changed quite a bit in the time that you've lived there, especially just the last few years.
Seems like it's gonna change quite a bit more now.
It's gonna continue changing, yeah. Especially as they get that sewer lift station put in just down the road from you. You're gonna continue to see growth. That's that's part of what's happening in Spanish Fork is is a lot of development, so.
Let me just ask you a last thing. If you approve that, what happens to the property values for the adjoining properties? I I mean, from your history, it.
It's a good question. Typically, once you start to see development in an area, whether it be commercial or residential, property values depending on the market, but I would expect property values would go up because there's gonna be a demand for you to sell your your property. You're gonna be approached probably by other developers who want your property now that they're seeing growth around your area and that's my opinion. I don't know that I can back that up, but I would assume that as development continues to grow, property values also would would increase.
Wouldn't that be dependent upon the type of business that's in there for?
It would, but it depends on what happens with your property as well. You can see that part of your part property has the red. So if there's already a commercial use next door to you, who's to say that a commercial developer doesn't approach you and wanna buy your property for for another commercial use?
But that's not to say that you could have your, you could request to have your property zoned. Part of your property is also zoned for estate density, which is big lots with big houses. And so you could, you could request, or a developer could request to have the whole part of your property be that estate residential, and those are, those are high, people pay big money for those.
Another thing to keep in mind too is a lot of times he's talking about the value is, uh first question I get asked all the time is where are the utilities? And what's the access like? And so if you see a business come in, there's gonna be some uh infrastructure installed, the road will be widened. Um there's water all to the site, sewer, storm drain, it'll all be there. And so then the next person in is usually, it's a lot easier than the first guy. The first guy has to pioneer a few things to get it out there, so. Now, at what that equates to in dollars, I don't know, but that does have value there.
Okay, thanks.
So addressing the the Mill Road, um obviously with ALA, this is a very quick road. Um speed limit is what it is. Um widening it and improving it unless we wanna raise property taxes pretty significantly. Um the only way it gets better is with development like this. So that intersection of Mill Road, we wouldn't approach Mr. Warren and go to buy, you know, his whole frontage to go improve the road. Uh unless super extenuating circumstances, um because there's not really a budget to go buy new property for stuff like this, so. Upon development, that's when the roads get better.
So Mike, do you, there are some places, I'm thinking over by Maple Mountain High, where property could take years and years and years, if ever, to be developed, right? And so we're looking at this road here. You may have this portion or this piece right here that gets widened. This part right here, these these people might be happy and.
It's not even in the city yet. That property.
And so, so that might not get developed or, and you you showed on the screen, the map, you got just this little piece that's been widened, but then it goes back to the county road basically, and so I mean, it could take years and years to actually have the full road fully developed, right?
And it gets worse before it gets better. They've had that conversation about twenty-five fifty east or Spanish Fork Parkway over there. You hate to have a conversation.
True story.
Right? I mean, it's, uh there's just no answer that you can give that's gonna make anybody feel any better about, you know, that interim where properties are developing incrementally and it, like really twenty-five fifty east is a great example where Maple Mountain, I'm sorry, no, it is Maple Mountain. That's been now open for twelve years and still we don't have all of the improvements along twenty-five fifty east there yet. So we know it takes time and traffic just gets worse and worse, but that's the model that we have. We don't have a funding source to get out ahead of development.
Does the city have some funding for road improvement or road development, or is that only done by developers?
New road construction is ninety-nine percent of the time done by development.
The only time where we get funding is significant um regional projects, and that's MAG funding. So for example, this Spanish Fork Parkway, developers built this road with their money plus impact fees all the way to a point, and now we're struggling with the road, but regardless, we have funding for the crossing, but just on the other side, that's all funded by developers, and on the east right side, it's all developers as well. So we got a couple of million dollars, but the two, the connection points are funded still by developers, so.
I appreciate the current tax rates in Spanish Fork City compared to other cities within the county, and I'm willing to accept this in exchange for those lower property taxes.
Hmm.
That's my position. Now, trash day on Old Mill Road, that's scary to drive on. I do that all the time. After I drop my kids off at ALA, I come down Old Mill Road, and if there's a car coming the other direction, you.
See, probably actually slow down.
Yeah.
Like, oh, I, I'm under twenty-five.
So traffic calming on garbage day is great.
So I'm under twenty-five all the time.
So that's the one thing about not a good road is you're going slower.
I I don't even know if there's a speed limit sign posted currently. I just have.
There is.
Is it posted? It says it on my nav, but I just don't look at it.
Actually, I'm going right into that picture.
Is it?
No excuses, Joseph.
Mike, was that proposed roundabout? Are we gonna be there additional traffic on the Mill Road from ALA?
Yeah.
And do we have any plans in store as far as slowing down the traffic, like those temporary barricades or?
Could.
Those, those are helpful. We've got one now in our neighborhood.
So one of the challenges too with Mill Road, I don't know how far you wanna get into Mill Road, but is. Okay.
Sorry, Mike.
No, we're good, no, we're good. I don't. Um is it's a, it's a typical county cross-section, like the width of the road is very typical, right? And there's A to B and there's driveways, a little more frequent on Mill Road than maybe out in the county, a little farther. But the two-lane roads are everywhere, right? Through the county, through everywhere else, and speed limits are anywhere from twenty-five to fifty-five. Right? Fourth North, it goes all the way out to West Mountain out there. It's forty to sixty mile an hour roads, right, and it's two-lane. Um it feels fast because of how narrow it feels, because there is trees up next to the road. There's garbage cans on garbage day.
Straight to, to your point, the straighter it is, the faster you feel like you can go.
Right, and so we do have some ways, we can put out some cones, we have some traffic calming. Um accident-wise, again, you don't wanna be post-going in and trying to fix something. You don't want someone to die before you fix something. Um but as far as accidents, people going off the road, hitting garbage cans, we just don't have the data that says we should spend a significant amount of money to slow traffic down. Obviously, it's still posted twenty-five. We think twenty-five's a good speed. No one goes twenty-five. Um.
I do.
It is a challenge, except for you, when you look at your nav and see twenty-five, it it slows you down.
I do, because I was reminded by one of the city's finest that the speed limit is twenty-five.
Thank you, John. Oh, just kidding. It wasn't.
So it is, it is, it's not great. It'll only get better with development, but at this point, I, unless we want to go buy the front yards of the properties for a mile at appraised value and then build a road at seven hundred dollars a foot, we're just not gonna get there.
But Mr. Kirkham has a point where the more it's improved, the faster people are gonna go.
Sure, it's true.
But also, yeah.
Anyway.
Fast for a block and then slow down for a block and then fast.
Fortunately, that that improvement is just kinda near that intersection where you need a dedicated right turn lane anyway.
Can I comment on just one point, the guy you talked about in Old Road? You know, there there was like a, the road caved in and they fixed it right down there. And I tell you what, if you go over that thing faster than twenty-five miles an hour, you might be throwing in the air and throw it into the telephone pole.
So our tra- our traffic calming's working is what you're saying.
My kids, that's like a free amusement ride.
It's dangerous. I'm afraid somebody's gonna like get some serious injury. I mean, it it needs to be fixed. There is that.
Albert, that is.
Yeah, it was right by uh Albert's uh garage.
Oh, yeah, up there. It's up there where you come off the hill.
I don't know where that is.
Right there.
It's changed, but it's toward the sewer up there.
Now there's a dip.
Down this way just there. I think that's.
Yeah, this is twenty-twelve, so it's not in. They don't take pictures of Mill Road too often. So we we get fair amount of complaints for different reasons out there. Um.
That's your assignment tomorrow, Jackson, or the city may.
Go see if you can jump it.
See how much air I can get.
So enforcement, we can do the cones. Um again, widening, you'll just kind of encourage speed. Um you wanna make it feel slow, and that's not being able to see a lot in front of you, having stuff in the road. Um so we'll continue to look into it. There's about six or seven roads we're looking at, and this is one of them.
Okay.
Somebody remind me, did we move out of public hearing?
Hope so.
Okay, go ahead and move out of public hearing on this one. Um any commission comments, additional comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the pro- proposed zone change be recommended to the city council for approval with the findings that are in the report.
Staff report. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Hopefully we can.
The Jazz are up big time.
Yeah.
Yeah, seventy-six, one oh six.
Hopefully we can get him on the first of the council's agenda.
Had forty-seven points in the first quarter.
Been nice to see.
Uh last but not least, the Kim Pierce zone change, if we can jump to that on the presentation slide. Mike, this one's a slam dunk, pun intended. Um Mr. Pierce is looking to expand property that they recently purchased. That's a bad image. Let's go to the presentation. Thank you.
So the pitch that's highlighted is what's being requested to change. It's currently RR. And then everything to the east of it and to the north of it is R one twelve. And so to be consistent with the general plan, um it would, it, the request is, sorry, let me start over. The request is consistent with the general plan as far as changing to the R one twelve. If we jump to the next slide, um kinda the reason for the request is this, and so um he's looking to farm lot three, lot two, there's an existing home um that they'll expand the backyard, and then lot one is an existing home that would be platted. Um and so it would be subdivided property uh in second step. That's currently underway um with city staff, but the rezon is needed for those lot sites.
Maple Mountains baseball diamond, right?
Behind it.
Behind it.
Yeah, I know exactly where this is.
Um with the property to the east, no, to the west, with the road that comes up. Wasn't there a road cut over somewhere?
Stubbed.
Stubbed?
Well, not, not there yet.
But the concept was to have that. So based on what we're looking at with this proposal, does it allow for a road to come in from?
He'd have the ability to put up to thirty, are, we currently have limitations on the length of cul-de-sac and the number of units on a cul-de-sac. And so in the future, there would be the possibility that they could further develop that lot three and further subdivide it.
But of course, that's gonna be subject to complaints that the existing residents will have about tying a stubble street into the development next door, so.
Why would, no.
Why would they complain about that? Somebody's sleeping back here.
Yeah, Kim Pierce being able to buy this liberal property so he can develop it with his property next door is like a dream come true.
So is that, is that who's?
Functionally getting developed.
Okay, so he's the one that's.
From the guys, they had some issues over this property line is a big issue. This is great. Right? The only way this back property develops is when this.
Yeah, it's too narrow out at the street at one hundred south.
Or the nightmare, sorry, the nightmare then is that in fifteen years, when everything around it's developed, somebody comes in and tries to develop this skinny piece. You know, even with the stubble street to it, it just, you can't make it work, so.
So he, I guess we don't know how he'll change his preliminary. Is he gonna re- resubmit a different plan now that he owns this piece of property?
Uh one we showed on the presentation slide is current. That's his current request. He, his desire, if I'm wrong, is to continue to farm it, expand what he's farming, and then he'll deal with other uses in the future.
But you can see how creating that one big lot, at least you can see what leads to a lot easier property than.
Five and a, just short of five and a quarter. Maybe for taxing reasons, he should go a little bit better.
About five and a quarter acres back there.
Yeah, he's got five point two three on the plat, so.
You could be, you could.
Sorry, I sat down. Any questions for staff?
You got the applicant here?
Uh no, this is uh Mr. Cody Winterton. He was with us earlier this evening.
John, you know Kim Pierce, don't you?
Yeah, I do. I thought maybe.
This is Kim's project. Regrettably, he couldn't be here today, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Brandon.
Well, that's a good move.
And what does he hope happens? He can't be here. What is, what is he hoping for? Does he agree with staff's recommendation or is he against it?
So this, this is applicant-driven.
Okay.
This is his request. He couldn't make it. And based on the DRC's recommendation that it be approved because it's consistent with the general plan, we felt confident that uh he could miss the meeting and plead his case later.
Is that where he's, is that where he is?
You can sympathize, right?
Joseph, you wanna do that, right?
From last ever. I would never miss a meeting.
Are you entertaining, are you entertaining motion?
No, we have to do.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address? Cody, any comments?
Well, sir.
Alright. Yeah, you bet. Okay, seeing none, we'll move out of public comment. And if there's any commissioners that have anything to say, otherwise.
I have a comment.
Oh, comment.
My comment is that I sincerely apologize out there to TV land. If there's anyone that thought that I said that citizens were stupid. I totally just don't like it when informed citizens think that our elected officials and our professional representatives are stupid, and that they assume that they haven't done their due diligence. And that our elected officials are hired to use their education and good judgment and also a listening ear and have conversations with our wonderful public.
Thank you, Shannon.
That's the way you said it, said it, and I interpreted it the first time, so. Totally good.
I agree.
Agree.
Yep.
Totally.
I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommends approval to the city council of the proposed zone change. And that the, my recommendation is contingent upon the applicant complying with staff's findings in the staff report.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. That was our last agenda item. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up tonight or can we adjourn?
Alright, thank you. That was our last agenda item. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up tonight or can we adjourn?
You're in charge, you're in charge.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Walter, Jazz score update?
Eighty-three, one-ten.